The March 5th Lane Community College Board of Education Board Meeting will now be called to order. Celia, will you please call roll?
Yes, Kevin Alltucker.
Here.
Denise Diamond.
Here.
Austin Folnagie.
Here from Salem.
Sophie Gibson.
Here.
Steve Mattel.
Here.
Zach Malholland.
Here.
Julie Weisman.
Here.
Okay, we will be moving on to the land recognition. The land acknowledgement speaker for this meeting is Shane Turner. Shane, will you please provide the recognition?
I'd like to start our meeting with acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapooia people. The Kalapooia were stewards of this very land for over fourteen thousand years before the traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapooia.
Thank you. We're moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the March 5th Board Meeting Agenda?
Still moved, seconded.
Okay, the motion is moved and seconded. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Okay, please note that the equity lens has been provided for the board's reference. Do we have any questions or comments to the responses to information requests? Seeing none. We will now be moving on to public comment. The board may not respond to any issues raised directly during public comment, but will refer those issues to the president for appropriate action. Celia, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. And in order to accommodate everyone, the board has requested that we limit to two minutes each, and I will be notifying you if you've gone over time. The first speakers are Rivers Shepherd, Kat Tabor, and Camilla Mortensen.
Hi, I'm Camilla Mortensen. I teach at LCC, a reporter at Eugene Weekly. I'm on the board of directors for the Highway 58 Herald. And because I love journalism and I love journalists, I am the advisor for LCC's The Torch. For a variety of reasons, as the board knows, The Torch and journalism fell by the wayside for a little bit at Lane Community College, but it's back and the journalists of The Torch are why. I recently gave a talk at City Club Eugene on the rise of electronic media. And when I said The Torch was not just back, but printing, I was probably met with the loudest applause of the entire presentation that day. It says a lot about what people think about Lane Community College. It says a lot about what people think of media, and it says a lot of what people think about print media. These students are the writers, they are the editors, they are the reporters, they are the dreamers, and they're the ones who got this done. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Hello, my name is Rivers Shepherd. Our founding fathers enshrined the freedom of the press in the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States because they recognized that the freedom of the press is paramount to a functioning democracy. Now more than ever, we need student journalism. This is so that new journalists going into the field can learn to ethically perform journalism. This is so that LCC students can promote our own school, the work that we're doing here and our activities that we're doing here. And it's also so that journalism students have the opportunity to practice one of the most vital tasks placed upon us by the nature of our calling, which is to hold those in power accountable. When I came before you three months ago, I I was excited about journalism, but I did not know yet if it was my true calling. And now I'm standing before you today to let you know that this is what I'm pursuing in my life as my passion. And I do see it as a true calling. I'm going to be an investigative reporter and I'm not going to stop investigating, reporting, and exposing truth wherever it is hidden. So I'm extremely grateful to be getting my start here at LCC. I don't think that had I been anywhere else that I would have been able to get quite the start that I did and quite the jumpstart that I did. So I'm extremely grateful to LCC, to The Torch, to Camilla, to Kat, to Chandler, and to everybody who has supported The Torch coming back. Thank you so much.
Hi there, I'm going to hand you each one of our copies of the print after coming back from the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, while the material is being handed out, can we restart the clock for the speaker?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, esteemed board members and honored guests. My name is Kat Tabor, and I am a reporter and incoming editor for The Torch and The Denali. I'm excited to share the incredible progress that we've made in revitalizing our campus publications and the opportunities we are creating for students. After a long pandemic pause, The Torch is officially back in print. I've provided you each with a copy to see firsthand. This is a significant milestone, not just for our newspaper, but for the entire student body. Bringing The Torch back has reignited enthusiasm across campus, giving students the platform to share their stories once again. Beyond reviving the newspaper, we are also transforming our workspace. Our new office is in Center Building, Room 450. It's becoming a collaborative hub where students and faculty can develop, edit, and polish stories together. We are also working towards adding a podcast studio and expanding out into multimedia journalism, opening a lot more new avenues in storytelling. One of our newest writers, Sequoia Hall, perfectly represents the energy and ambition behind this revival. With a passion for sports journalism, he eagerly joined The Torch, submitting three articles in his very first week without having any prior experience. He kept telling us how excited he was that he finally had a space to practice his craft, giving him a real stepping stone towards his lifelong dream and career in sports media and being able to pursue it right here on campus. Beyond The Torch, I'm thrilled to share The Denali. Our literary arts magazine is growing once again. Submissions are steadily coming in, and students are eager to see their creative work published. We are together as one. I joined The Torch in October 2024, and in just a few months, it has completely reshaped my academic career path. What once started as a simple conversation about writing has led into incredible opportunities, opportunities that have shown me the true impact of student journalism. I'll wrap up with this. The Torch and The Denali are more than just publications. They are platforms for students to explore their passions, shape their futures, and amplify voices. We are here to create, inform, and inspire, and this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Collins, followed by Casey Brabham and Gary.
Meaning we're a good return on the investment. Not every SBDC can say this, but we can because for forty years you've supported the Small Business Development Center, and we want to say thank you. A few economic development numbers are going to be passed out to you guys. In 2024, we helped six hundred forty-four business owners with over eighteen hundred hours, opened fifteen new businesses, created a hundred twenty jobs, helped six to nine clients secure twenty-three million dollars of capital infusion, which is loans and investment. But what I really want to do is share a couple of stories about what we do. First, Lane County, as you might know, is designated a childcare desert. Eighteen months ago, we lacked twelve hundred childcare spots, but we have partnered with Quality Care Connections in Onward Eugene for the Early Childcare Provider Accelerator. Results speak for themselves. Over four cohorts, we've helped twenty-two new childcare businesses. Fourteen childcare businesses have expanded, over a hundred fifteen thousand dollars of grants, adding two hundred fifty-four new slots to Lane County. Very proud of the work. Last story, two weeks ago, the Springfield Chamber of Commerce honored Roger Wong, a Lane Community College employee, as our 2024 Distinguished Citizen of the Year. Roger is our senior business advisor and has dedicated fifteen to twenty hours a week, week after week, for eleven years, coaching and advising hundreds of small business owners. He couldn't come tonight, but I wanted to share the honor with Lane Community College. I'm proud of the work that we do and want to introduce Kerry's Casey Brabham from our business advising team and Gary Smith, who's our Small Business Management faculty.
Thank you, Dan, for inviting me to be here. Thank you, everyone, for having us. I wanted to tell a little bit of a personal story about myself. I came back to the U.S. in 2016 after living out of the country with two suitcases and my child. And we set about setting up our life here again after being gone. And I was looking for any job that I could find, and I got one at the Lane SBDC. Didn't really know what they did there, but that's the job I got. Dan mentioned Roger. He was one of the first advisors I met at the time. I had a small hobby business, and he asked me, why don't you make this a real business? And it was the first time anyone in my life had ever believed in me or made me think that I could do that. So I did, and with Roger's help, I grew my art business to a full-time business, which I still currently run and still work at the SBDC. During the pandemic, I started co-advising and instructing with Roger for his Business Plan Accelerator program that he built. Last year, he passed that program on to me, and with the help of a different instructor that we have, Brenda Stubbs, we've revamped it to a version that is now serving more Lane County businesses in more customized ways, including reaching our rural businesses as we do serve all of Lane County. I've now been with the SBDC about nine years. It started because I needed a job, and I'm there because I love what I do. Now I get to ask people, why don't they turn their life into a business and achieve their dreams? So Dan already mentioned that Roger won that award. I wanted to mention that as well. No one is more deserving than Roger in our community to be honored. So thank you for letting me share my personal story with you about how we serve our local businesses.
Carrie Smith, followed by Adrian Mitchell, Amy Beasley, and Erin Bartley.
Good evening, President Bulger and Honorable Board of Directors. I appreciate your time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, more importantly, for your ongoing support of the Small Business Development Center. As a business owner for over forty years and as faculty here for over seventeen years, I have the great privilege of teaching our flagship program, the Small Business Management Series, which has been shaping entrepreneurial landscape here in Lane County for over forty years. In this two-year program, we don't teach just business privileges or principles, excuse me. We provide a business and life-saving roadmap for small business owners. Our students gain a deep understanding of financial management, employee management, marketing, operations, strategic planning, and more. But knowledge isn't alone enough, as we all know. It's about the application of that in the real world. That's why I work with each student one-on-one, helping them apply what they learn directly to their businesses, ensuring that they make real-world progress. The impact of this program is profound. Nearly one thousand businesses in Lane County can trace their success back to the Small Business Development Center. One inspiring example currently is Luminaire Press, who found our founder joined our program in 2011 and has been an active supporter of the program as an alumni since that time. She started as a solo entrepreneur, now has six full-time employees, twenty outside contractors, and an aggressive growth trajectory. This is what we together accomplish. A story is just one of many, proof that when we invest in small business education, we create jobs, strengthen our local economy, and empower individuals to turn their dreams into thriving enterprises. Not only that, those businesses stand ready to support Lane Community College when it's needed. That is an unbelievably public asset that we all invest in, and I appreciate you building that with us. Looking ahead, I've never been more excited about the future of the SBDC. I've been here for a long time. I've seen a lot of leaders come and go. The current leadership of the college, as well as the leadership of my department with Dan, is the best that I've seen in the seventeen years I've been here, and I'm greatly privileged to be part of that. The dedication that we have for both faculty and students, ensuring that our programs remain innovative, relevant, and respected to the ever-changing needs of small businesses is critical. With the SBDC team, our continued support and your continued support, our legacy and continue to expand our reach and our impact. Thank you for believing in us. Thank you for believing in our students and the power of small business education. I look forward to seeing what more we'll accomplish in the next forty years.
Adrian Mitchell, followed by Amy Beasley, Wendy Simmons, and Erin Bartley.
Good evening, Sophie, members of the board, President Bulger. My name is Adrian Mitchell. I'm a faculty member, a community member, a voter in Lane County, and I have the great honor of serving as the president of LCC EA, our faculty union, representing the full-time and part-time faculty at LCC. Over the past year and a half, you've heard from no less than one hundred fourteen faculty members providing public comment at your meetings, sharing their stories of success and challenge, discussing the strain of workload, the instability of working as a part-time faculty member without knowing whether they will have work for the next term, the stories of our students who struggle with basic needs, the lack of staffing for tutors, advisors, career and mental health counselors, the desire to uphold the campus sanctuary resolution, the value of professional development in doing our best work to serve students, and so much more. We celebrated our solidarity tonight with an event. And joining us are our labor siblings from the OEA, representing more than forty-two thousand members throughout the state, and our labor partners from Lane County education workers and statewide organizations, including the AAUP, the GTFF, and United Academics, and also our wonderful, amazing student leaders. You will hear from more faculty tonight. The heart of our message is this: We care deeply about our work. We choose this work because we are dedicated to serving students, and we are professionals committed to the instructional and student services mission of LCC. However, we are seriously concerned about the ongoing institutional disinvestment in the mission. The most recent audit statement from FY23 shows that twelve percent of total expenditures go to student services and just thirty-eight percent to instruction. It's important to note that the instruction category includes all expenses for all instructional departments, including all employee groups, class five managers, faculty, as well as materials and services. Ample investment in this core instructional and student services mission is incumbent upon you as our publicly elected members of our governing board. As faculty, we stand in solidarity in support of our mission, centering the quintessential role of the community college in a vibrant democracy. And we ask you to stand with us to uplift the LCC mission and center the common good. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and President Bulger. As union members, we are presenting you with a signed poster with over one hundred signatures. In our Spring 2024 All Faculty Survey, two hundred and fifteen faculty responded with ninety-nine percent supporting these goals. Faculty are united in support of the following. Fair pay is important. Our salaries have fallen seven percent behind inflation, and competitive salaries are necessary to recruit and retain faculty. In addition, everyone should receive equal pay for equal work. Part-time faculty have the same qualifications as full-time faculty, teach the same classes, and serve the same students. Yet, part-time faculty earn only eighty-one point five percent of the salary for doing the same work or teaching the same class compared to full-time colleagues at LCC. Part-time faculty deserve pay parity. Reasonable workload is a major concern for faculty members. Our All Faculty Survey data indicate that seventy-eight percent of faculty report working more than their assigned and compensated FTE, with thirty-eight percent working fifty hours per week and nineteen percent working sixty hours or more per week. And eighty-nine point five percent report working evenings and/or weekends outside of regularly assigned times at least half of the weeks each term. For example, the workload factor for labs and lecture labs is out of date and falling farther and farther behind the average for community colleges, farther and farther below the statewide average. At six point six eight two, LCC has a lower factor for lab courses than the average for community colleges in Oregon, which is point seven six seven. Thus, the value assigned to an instructor's dedicated time to these courses is only sixty-eight point two percent of a lecture course, which is unfair and inequitable. We all want a safe, healthy campus. This means that LCC must be prepared in the event of a lockdown or public health emergency. We should expand access to gender-neutral restrooms, safe spaces for worship and lactation, and ensure the campus is physically accessible. And it is imperative that we expand access to higher education for our community and enhance sanctuary protections for our students. Necessities for student success. With the uncertainty that many students are feeling these days, with the rapid changes at the national level, counselors and mental health support are more critical than ever. So we must ensure that there are enough career and mental health counselors, advisors, and tutors to support students.
And I'm Wendy Simmons, and I'll continue with the statement. Faculty stand with students. We know that support for student basic needs, such as the Food Pantry and Basic Needs Center, is essential for their success. Likewise, supporting students through textbooks costs and reduced textbook costs and support for faculty time to develop open education resources will relieve financial pressure on students. Furthermore, when class sizes are reasonable, students form relationships with their instructors and classmates such that they get more feedback, build more confidence, and gain the skills and knowledge they need to succeed. Reasonable class sizes are key to student retention and persistence. Providing the essentials of faculty working conditions is critical for our campus. From our 2023 All Faculty Survey, forty-seven percent of faculty have considered seeking a job elsewhere due to working conditions at LCC. Many faculty have one or more other jobs besides working at LCC. All faculty need stability and job security to do our best work and dedicate our full attention to our students. Faculty working conditions are student learning conditions. Still, we are lacking the basic needs we need as faculty. Seventeen percent of faculty report not having an office space at LCC that allows them to meet privately with students, which not only makes effective meetings difficult, but creates problems with adhering to FERPA requirements. Twenty-eight percent report not having access to the technology needed to do their job. In addition, we must ensure that faculty do not suffer discrimination and that our search processes adhere to the highest standards of ethics and integrity. Furthermore, we must ensure our First Amendment academic freedom rights, which are under fire by the new federal administration, are fully protected so that we collectively can in turn support our community college mission, which is essential to the broader democracy. Regarding association rights and legal compliance, LCC is out of date in its legal compliance with Oregon Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act. And our faculty and classified unions deserve safe spaces to meet with adequate lighting and ventilation and free from rodents and sewage. Yes, those are real issues. Finally, faculty are united in approving conditions on campus. Ninety-nine percent endorse these goals so that we may create the campus our community deserves. We urge the board to invest in the central instructional and student services mission of the college. Thank you.
Erin Bartley, followed by Kendra Rivera and Jay Frazier.
Good evening, board members and President Bulger. My name is Erin Bartley, and I'm reading a statement from Tina Davis, a part-time faculty member in the Health Department. She writes, "As a union member at LCC, I stand with my faculty colleagues in voicing the need for mutual and agreeable interests at a time when so many destructive world events are unfolding each day. We are all here to support student learning in our jobs, but if we are hamstrung by the lack of understanding and lack of resources from the job, from the college, how are we to do our jobs effectively? The uncompensated workloads thrust upon faculty cause undue stress, which directly affects our students. I worry for the well-being of my students with so many LCC programs being cut and resources being eliminated while more management and vice president positions are being added. A budget which allocates necessary funding for student and faculty workloads is needed. This term, I have a student who has experienced multiple medical emergencies and who has repeatedly lashed out verbally, even though I have made many accommodations and referrals to help the student. This sad state is not unique with LCC students. It is commonplace. People are lashing out to compensate for unmet needs, both in the world and at this college, which could be doing so much more. Student services is a foundation for LCC students and at the current bare minimum, provides little help. I have referred students to early outreach, but due to the staffing shortage, they do not provide assistance in a timely manner. In addition to being an LCC instructor, I also register for LCC language classes, and I have seen language tutors cut, offering no services for language classes. Faculty need the resources to adequately provide for our students. But according to our faculty survey in Spring 2023, seventeen percent report not having office space at LCC that allows them to meet privately with students. Twenty-eight percent report not having access to the technology needed to do their job. Eighteen percent report that classes and instructional spaces do not allow them to serve students well. As board members and president, you have a very important responsibility to serve the community in the best way possible. I implore you to consider the impact on student learning and faculty workloads. Students need our help now more than ever.
Good evening, Sophie, President Bulger, Board of Education, and everyone here this evening. My name is Dr. Kendra Rivera. I'm a full-time instructor in Communication Studies, and I'm the faculty advisor for the Neurodivergent Student Union, or the NDSU. I am also a proud member of LCC EA, and tonight I'm here to advocate for both faculty rights and student success because we know that students will not learn and grow without the faculty who teach, support, and mentor them. First, I want to review what is what we mean by neurodivergent. Basically, neurodivergence is how science describes a brain that deviates from what is considered typical in how it interprets, processes, and communicates. Neurodivergent conditions include ADHD, autism, learning disabilities, Tourette's Syndrome, traumatic brain injury, and more. In the Pacific Northwest, approximately one to two out of every five students identifies as neurodivergent. So the NDSU seeks to support and empower this large population of students at LCC, as well as educate the LCC campus and advocate for neurodivergent equity. Next month, the Board of Education will vote on the student activity fees proposed by the Student Comprised and Student Life and Leadership Led Student Activity Fee Committee, or the SAFC. I spoke to you before this vote last year, and I am back again to call attention to this process. It is deeply problematic. I once again ask that you carefully review the allotments proposed by the SAFC, as well as the process by which these decisions were made. Due to our advocacy last year, this year's meetings were all publicly, are all publicly available for you to review. And you can now hear how the decisions were made for yourselves, and I encourage you to do so. I also encourage you to take the time to ask questions about why some fee-funded organizations were awarded funding greater than or less than they requested, and to inquire about what information and input was used to make these decisions. Consider the long-term impact of the SAFC's decisions, especially for NASA or this Native American Student Association and the NDSU. Is my time done?
I think so. Yeah, thank you.
Jay Frazier, followed by Daphne Gabrielli and Beth Powers.
Hi, hello, my name is Jay Frazier, and I'm a faculty member. Tonight, I'm reading a statement made from a neurodivergent student unit alumni, which means I should put on my ring glasses. So, "My name is Erin," the student wrote, "and I graduated from LCC in Spring 2024. I am now a student at the University of Oregon. I joined the NDSU in Spring of 2023 as we were just getting started. When I joined, I was not only struggling in my classes, but I was also facing challenges with mental health and was a raging alcoholic. The NDSU helped me stay at LCC, graduate, and continue my education. How did a small group of neurodivergent peers and one rad neurodivergent advisor, Kendra, have such a large impact on my education and my life? Well, they showed me that neurodivergent people belong in higher education. I belong in higher education. And I am also neurodivergent, and I also belong in higher education, I'd like to think." The student writes, "I am not in inconvenience, an embarrassment, or a troublemaker simply because my brain functions differently. My ideas and ways of knowing are a valuable contribution to not only the classroom, but to society more broadly. The NDSU students, staff, and faculty demonstrated resilience in the face of ableism, showed me how to find allies, and taught me how to self-advocate. Because of the NDSU, I found my voice, and I am not afraid to use it. This courage might frighten some people, but I am excited to see how my new self-confidence will help shape my life and the leadership or advocacy I will do in the future. As the NDSU continues to develop and with the funding they need, I have no doubt that the NDSU will continue to support students and make a difference at LCC, just like they did for me."
Good evening, student body president, Sophie, President Bulger, board members, everyone else. My name is Daphne Gabrielli. I'm writing and literature faculty. I'm also reading a statement on behalf of a student who is a current student of the Neurodivergent Student Union. She writes the following. "My name is Zoe, and I will be graduating from LCC in Spring 2024. In the first year of attending LCC, I heard about the Neurodivergent Student Union, NDSU. Being newly diagnosed with ADHD, I saw how important a group like this is from the very first meeting. I asked if the union needed any help, and at the next meeting, they officially offered me a position on the leadership team. I have been on the leadership team now for about a year and a half, and over that time, I have seen the NDSU welcome and support all students who come through, neurodivergent and neurotypical. We offer support to students who are struggling academically and need accommodations. We try to make success feel more achievable for all students and give them specific tools to help them out, such as study skills, ways to talk to professors, and general confidence building." building. Another important part of what the NDSU is providing is a physical space to help deal with the challenges that often accompany neurodivergence in higher education. The truly amazing thing about the NDSU is that we all feel like we can be ourselves, truly unmasked, which we can't do anywhere else on campus. The NDSU is a new student union. We have had to advocate for the existence of the union from our founding. Having to fight so hard for this identity group has really shown me how unknown and misunderstood the struggles of neurodivergence are, even by those who are meant to be understanding and supporting you. Our ultimate goal is to support our struggling community while teaching others how to work with neurodivergence in an understanding, empathetic way." Thank you.
Beth Powers, followed by Marge Helsler and April Myler.
Hi, Sophie, President Bolger, Board. Thank you so much for hearing me. My name is Beth Powers. I started the Neurodivergent Student Union. First week I got here, I was looking for one that wasn't here, so it took me about a year to find five people to sign up. But after that happened, it was really, people just started piling in every term, new people. It's become a unique space that's allowed autistic and neurodivergent students to find community and support, many for the first time in their lives. Our space has been transformed within LCC's understanding of neurodivergent needs and support strategies. I personally have interned at CAR and to assist in creating a more neurodivergent-friendly experience for students that are already going forward to perform in extraordinary and academically recognized ways. We continuously strive to help LCC set up some of our community's greatest potential assets to go on to succeed in other paths with LCC, the clear beginning of their journey, and efforts to navigate higher education. Our union has grown more each term with plans to have speakers, events, and student coaching opportunities, but our funding continues to be withheld to be the lowest-funded identity group on campus, while the scant funding is wasted on last-minute arrangements that were requested early and neglected for months, and then used to question our maturity in handling funding provided. I won't even be here next year, and money holds very little significance to me. Personally, my partner and I, as well as many other members, buy and donate materials out of our own budgets. What matters to me is equity, a vilified word as of late, parity. We continue to be treated like children that need adult supervision. This is and has become a self-perpetuating narrative, especially when we are set up to fail. It is an endemic societal cycle that neurodivergent students everywhere are trying desperately to overcome. Let LCC be a place where we can contribute to its rapidly growing neurological discovery and development support. Thank you for hearing me."
President Bolger, Cabinet members, and esteemed Board of Education members, I am Marge Helsler. In solidarity with my faculty colleagues, we are reading a statement from the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee members. The Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee is advocating for the reading of a land-backed statement at the beginning of board meetings instead of the current land acknowledgment statement. The current land acknowledgment statement reads like a victory speech as Joseph Lane conducted a genocide of Native peoples, not as an honest reflection of the histories of this land. We see diversity council's land-backed statement to be an honest recounting of our history of broken treaties and of a people that have survived the genocide. We, as an institution, need to abide by the words of the U.S. Constitution and the ratified treaties that have been long ignored. This statement acknowledges marginalized history and exploitative systems and emphasizes the way in which LCC is attempting to repair and heal those wrongs through a restoration justice lens, and clearly explains how we make space for all people in Lane Community College. We encourage the board to, one, collaborate with diversity council, the Native American Student Association, and other parties to come up with a land statement that is appropriate, graceful, and effective. And, two, allow for plurality in land statements, so folks will have the freedom, sovereignty, and power to read their own statements as long as it's in the service to the spirit of Kalapuyia and Native sovereignty, freedom, and power.
My name is April Myler, Nursing faculty, and I will now share the diversity council and NASA-approved land-backed statement. I'd like to invite us to start this Board of Education meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapuyia people. The Kalapuyia currently are and have been stewards of this very land for over fourteen thousand years before their traditional way of life was disrupted and nearly destroyed. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuyia people were dispossessed of their homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Grand Round Reservation in western Oregon because American settlers threatened the Kalapuyia with extermination. Today, there are citizens of federally recognized tribal nations of Oregon, like the Confederated Tribes of Grand Round Community of Oregon, and communities that have gone federally unrecognized, like the Kalapuyia, who continue to make important contributions in their communities at Lane and across the land we now refer to as Oregon. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the Kalapuyia. Moreover, we invite and encourage tribal peoples to use the land in services at LCC, like the Long House, the Native American Student Association, and the annual LCC Powwow, which is one of the biggest in the Northwest. Despite the colonial and oppressive history of Lane County, we encourage the reparation of Kalapuyia's original land, language, ceremonies, food, education, housing, healthcare, governance, medicine, kinship, and culture. The Kalapuyia have a long legacy of freedom, life, and culture, and deserve sovereignty over that. We are committed to inviting space for activities, classes, and programs in American Indian Language classes, ethnic studies classes, Native American Studies, credit and non-credit classes on Native American culture, activities, and events sponsored by the Native American Student Program and the Native American Student Association and other events, keeping with the spirit and purpose of Kalapuyia sovereignty. We are committed to staying open to feedback and proposals on making space for all people at Lane Community College. Thank you.
Jen Saklin, followed by Leslie Soriano-Cervantes and Paula Thonny.
Hello. My name is Jen Saklin, and I am a part-time faculty member in the ESL and Career Pathways Departments and a part-time classified staff member in the Career Pathways Department. I am here to ask you to urge the administration to support pay parity for part-time faculty members in our next contract. One myth that you may have heard is that part-time faculty members don't have the same teaching responsibilities as full-time faculty members. This is simply not true. My teaching responsibilities are identical to those of my full-time faculty colleagues. Full-time faculty at LCC and part-time faculty at LCC are expected to do exactly the same work for exactly the same number of hours, for exactly the same courses, including class prep, grading, and office hours. Full-time faculty may teach additional courses or may have additional committee work that they're paid separately for, but the per-hour teaching work is identical. Another myth that you may hear is that we need to pay part-time faculty less in order to keep the college flexible and agile to respond to rapidly changing enrollment. In the ESL department, we have five full-time faculty and seventeen part-time faculty. Most of the part-time faculty have worked in our department for six or more years, and some have worked here for twenty or more years. Almost all of us would jump at the chance at a full-time position. If a department hires the same group of part-time people for twenty years, they are not responding to a need to be flexible and agile. It is also a myth that part-time faculty members aren't as qualified as full-time faculty members. My qualifications are identical to those of my full-time faculty colleagues, and yet, I make eighty-one point five percent per teaching hour of what a full-time faculty colleague at the same step makes for that same teaching hour. We are asking for equal pay for equal work. I have more to say, but I don't want to waste my last eleven seconds, so I will just summarize by saying I am so lucky to work here at LCC. I love my jobs, I love my students, and by passing pay parity, faculty like me will be fairly compensated and will have more time to spend with our students. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, Sophie and President Bolger. My name is Leslie Soriano-Cervantes, and I am reading a statement on behalf of ESL instructor and union member Amy Griffin, who could not be here tonight. I do love teaching ESL at LCC, but the uncertainty of being a part-time faculty member is super stressful. I do not know from term to term what my level of employment will be, though I've now been at Lane for five years and three months in the ESL field for thirteen years. My full assignment rights are point-six-seven FTE, half of my assignment rights at point-three-three FTE, or zero FTE. I found out on February 25th that I have been assigned a class for spring term starting on March 31st. Of course, I don't know if the class will actually run or be canceled. I constantly doubt and question my decision to stay at LCC and my general decision to enter the teaching profession. Worrying about job security, financial security, and health insurance is mentally and emotionally exhausting. It affects my self-esteem. Planning for the future is difficult when my financial situation is uncertain. I see posters at the downtown campus that read "Education Pays." When I see that, I always reflect on my precarious position as part-time faculty. Are my years of education and professional experience paying? Today, February 26th, yes. What about spring 2025? Can I pay my mortgage? Can I make my student loan payment? Can I look my students in the eyes and stand behind the narrative that LCC will pay for them? When part-time faculty have job security, they can focus their mental and intellectual energy on preparing effective learning opportunities and providing feedback to students. Thank you.
Paula Thonny, followed by Sarah Erickson and Anne McGrail.
I'm going to have Sarah read the first part of my statement.
Good evening, members of the Board, President Bolger, and Sophie. My name is Dr. Sarah Erickson. I teach developmental one hundred and two hundred level math and statistics, and I'm reading the first part of my colleague Paula's statement. I'm here to speak to the importance of two different services for students: testing and tutoring. The Instructional Services Testing Center is located in the center building upstairs from the library. I use the testing center for my online classes, which require proctoring, proctored testing. While the ability to leverage AI will likely be a needed skill in the future, I am teaching foundational math skills. AI can provide a step-by-step worked solution to almost any math problem. I feel far more confident having my students complete a written in-person test without the use of online resources. If I were proctoring these tests myself, I could offer one or maybe two time slots to my students. The testing center provides the option for my online students to come in during the week, some evenings, and occasionally Saturdays as well. This makes a huge difference to students who are working and navigating childcare. I'm grateful that they have flexibility in when to complete their test. Many of my colleagues in the math department use the ITS proctoring services as well and find it an invaluable resource. I'm highly impressed with the testing center staff. Testing is stressful for students, and the testing center staff are kind and supportive to students, while also running a very lean operation that proctors hundreds of tests for a variety of classes across campus. They are often full to capacity. Having this resource available is a huge asset for instructors of online classes who do not have a set time for class meetings. Instructors who choose to require in-person testing can submit their tests to the testing center and rely on the testing center to provide a secure testing environment. This frees us to focus on providing quality lessons, interacting with students, and creating meaningful assessments for our students. Please continue to generously fund the critically important work that the testing center staff are doing.
So, my name is Paula Thonny. I teach math, and I'm going to also talk about tutoring. I recently ran into a former student and asked how her classes were going. She said good overall, but that she had been really struggling with a writing class. She said that the tutoring center had been incredibly helpful to her in improving her writing. The writing support allows students to bring in an essay and receive feedback and support in a timely fashion. I have heard this from students repeatedly, how crucial the tutoring support is for their success. Here is another quote from a returning student in my trades class. "Thank God for the support that is available here at LCC. Otherwise, I wouldn't be passing this class. The staff, tutors, and teachers are extremely supportive, easy to connect with from a mentor teaching level, but also on a personal level." That's huge for being successful in school. And so, the tutoring center is now located in Building 16. There used to be tutoring available in the center building, but now it's just in Building 16. We would like tutoring to be robustly funded. And I'm going to end with a little bit more of a student statement here. This is from my student Rick. "My name is Rick. I'm a current online student enrolled in the Math 85 Geometry for Technicians, and Paula is my instructor. Thank you for taking my thoughts, feelings, and opinions into account about the tutoring resources available. I'm currently doing a career change after twenty-plus years working in healthcare in Portland, Oregon. When I first started this class, I was excited until I saw the workload and complexity of the problems. My first thought is, I'm going to fail this class, and I'll have to do it again. I actually emailed Paula the first couple of days telling her I felt like I was already failing and would have to repeat the class. I started getting tutoring help via Zoom and in person. I find that the more complex work is best to do in person, where you can see the steps in real time and be able to say, wait, I don't understand this step. For less complicated work, Zoom is just fine and more convenient, as I travel from Cottage Grove to the 30th Avenue site. I don't know if I'm alone in the amount of help I need in this class, but if it wasn't for the tutoring, I would absolutely be failing, failing with an F minus. A few weeks ago, I took my midterm, and I came out of it thinking I probably scored a D, maybe a C. Surprisingly, I scored a B." That's the tutoring. So, he is speaking in support of tutoring. So please fund the tutoring as much as possible. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anne McGrail, faculty in Humanities, and I'm sharing comments tonight as a union member with the LCC EA. I teach Writing and Literature classes here at Lane. As you know, the landscape around writing has shifted in the last eighteen months. Large language models and artificial intelligence have accelerated and intensified the influence technology has on student learning. At a recent conference in my field, I heard scholars in a packed session respond to the speed with which knowledge production is changing. Quote, "The humanities are more necessary than ever," said one scholar. "Our cultural heritage as a species is migrating to digital formats, and our relationship to knowledge and information is changing in profound and unpredictable ways." What does AI have to do with budgets and with faculty? We need to be sure our students have the tools and skills they need to navigate this complex information and the attention environments that students are entering. This aspect of the learning context hinges on three key components of the learning environment. We ask you to keep these in mind in coming discussions and negotiations. Students at Lane have consistently reported that to succeed in school, they need small class sizes. They need up-to-date hardware and software in their classrooms, labs, and learning spaces. They need adequate career counselors, academic advisors, tutors, and mental health counselors. They need resources. These resources will support them in the accelerated and complex environments they inhabit as learners. They also report that the health clinic and food pantry are key to their success at Lane. And I will stop. Thank you.
Sophie Gibson, followed by Christina Howard, David Eagle, and Eric Kim.
Evening, President Bolger, Chairman Holland. Today, I stand here in front of you as a student, supporting other students with my story. I am getting my Career Pathways Certificate in Addiction Studies to go on to get my CADC, and many-- many students are doing the same thing. We have a large enrollment of CTE Trades Career Pathways students here. And, uh, I, I feel a little sad because I wasn't able to get the advising that I needed in my program. I get to take a co-op to do my study hours in order to get certified and get my certificate. Many students have to follow the same guidelines. And, uh, I felt that I fell into the cracks because nobody reached out to me about how I was supposed to take my co-op. Uh, I didn't know what to do. I reached out to my advisors, and, and they also couldn't really help me. And, uh, you know, being the student I was, I went ahead and took the initiative to reach out to my instructor, but I knew how to do that because I've been here at Lane for two years now. And I feel that if I was a student earlier on in, in my degree and, you know, going to my internship, I wouldn't have known what to do. And, you know, and sometimes in the face of these adversities, students fall behind and fall through the cracks. And so I, I really ask that the board, you know, stands up and supports advising, uh, as well as other things like open education resources that make textbooks and, uh, other costs for students more accessible, which means that they're more likely to stay in class, more likely to, uh, not have to worry about other things when they can afford their resources. And, uh, last but not least, I am also going to ask that we also support keeping costs low for students, OERs, advising, and mental health resources, because times are really rough right now, uh, as we all know. And I can feel it on campus when I walk around that my friends, my classmates, my peers are all really under a high load of stress. So it's really important that we fund the mental health center and, uh, as well as the health clinic. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Hart. I'm an LCC officer, and I'm also the coordinator for the Physical Therapist Assistant Program. I'm here to share some really good news about what our program has done to build a representative healthcare workforce through our intentional planning on acting on our commitment to justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, belonging, and anti-racism. The first thing I'd like to share is that we have historic retention of our non-white students. From two thousand to two thousand and three, we have seen our non-white student representation go from eighteen percent to thirty percent, and that number is climbing. We do not use race information in our admissions decisions, but what we have done is we have flattened admissions requirements and also offer credit for prior learning, so we can acknowledge the workforce experience that students bring, as well as the academic experience students bring in making our admissions decisions. These progressive changes in our admissions processes have resulted in record retention rates, as well as improvements in building a representative healthcare workforce. We know the healthcare outcomes improve when our providers reflect the communities that they serve. We've also changed our grading practices, and this is because we were able to attend a professional development workshop hosted here at LCC that was funded through our Faculty Professional Development Fund. We have adopted grading for equity practices, and in those practices, we have seen reduced, uh, student stress, increased student success, and increased student retention. These things would not have been possible without us having the Faculty Professional Development Department that is funded, and I want to advocate for continuing with that funding. The other thing that we've done is we've, um, gone to a completely online application, and we've extended our application deadlines. So we're no longer just open and close in a month. We're open for, um, through August. So that allows students to prepare and become accepted throughout the term. Finally, we've adopted technical standards that allow for more inclusion of students with differences according to disability. We've shifted from an organic skills approach to a functional approach. So we can invite our students with disabilities to, to be healthcare providers, so they too can represent the communities that we all serve. Uh, this is because our part, our part-time faculty are highly engaged in these activities. I'm gonna echo my colleague's, um, commitment to pay parity for our part-time folks. Thank you very much.
Good evening. David Eagle. I'm here again, uh, to bring up the subject of Dun Hall denaming on the U of O campus in two thousand and sixteen, as well as other misinformation that's been, uh, provided to our community through the Lane County History Museum, as well as we've, uh, seen a great deal of flurry of activity with the county commissioners and others dealing with the North Bank, uh, Ferry Street Bridge community, each of which I have websites, which I've sent links to you about. A great deal of misinformation is being forwarded. On the issue, uh, the reason I'm here is that's first to raise awareness, and second of all, to ask for you to nudge the, the administration at the University of Oregon to finally recognize the, uh, wrongdoing that was done in two thousand and sixteen. One of the best people this community ever produced in its entire history was Frederick Dunn. He was not the leader of a clan. He was not active with them. And in fact, he was quite ecumenical and racially progressive, and there's a record which I provided. My most recent website, uh, is called How Faulty Scholarship Caused the Dun Hall Denaming. And what it simply comes down to is a man named Eckhart Toy submitted a master's thesis in nineteen fifty-nine. There was no Dun Hall. This is at the University of Oregon. He graduates. He goes on. His thesis was on the Oregon Klan. Years go by, decades go by. He now turns his attention to the Eugene area. He had misinterpreted a letter from Dean Sheldon, but he'd never researched it or backed it up. What was actually going on is Dean Sheldon was writing to a mutual friend, laughing at the idea that these crooked fraternal order salesmen were, were lying to people, telling them Dunn was the head of this organization. He thought it was a big joke. Toy and the report authors later in two thousand and sixteen never bothered to seriously research this. The bad inform, uh, good information's in this file. They didn't even look at it. It's at the archives.
Eric Kim.
Is my audio coming through?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Lane Community College Board of Education. Dr. Bolger, SGA President Gibson. My name's Sarah Kim. I'm here to talk about how students develop achievement motivation. Success in school is a combination of multiple behaviors. The more you practice these behaviors, they become more spontaneous and easier. Achievement motivation is the desire to excel in a particular domain. Individuals need to be intrinsically motivation, motivated. Each person needs to discover what interests them, like working on trucks. Parents, managers, teachers, or leaders, they need to praise the learning process, hard work, and diligence, such as, "You worked hard." Avoid praise for innate abilities such as, "You are smart." Caregivers and leaders that encourage and reward achievement and don't punish failure help foster a strong motive for success. Punishing failure can increase anxiety and develop a fear of failure. A fear of failure keeps people from taking safe risks. What does this mean for students? Students need feedback on their learning. Feedback helps students learn what their skill level is so they can put their, so they can set their goals slightly above their skill level. Punishment for failure can make people afraid of getting feedback and learning what their skills are. Knowing that mistakes are a part of learning can help you feel less anxious about trying new things. Trying new things and practicing is how we learn and achieve. Engaging in behaviors associated with achievement motivation allows students a roadmap to success. It allows them that first step on the journey of a thousand miles. While there's no guarantees in life, living life that fosters achievement motivation helps people have agency over their life. Thank you for your time.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you to everyone who provided testimony. That is the conclusion of public comment. We will be moving on to the report section of the board agenda. The first report is the president's report.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to begin my report by thanking the board for your leadership and ongoing commitment to Lane Community College. Your support helps us stay focused on fiscal sustainability, enrollment growth, and institu, and institutional climate as we navigate challenges and opportunities. I'm pleased to report that the, that Lane's Fall twenty-twenty-four Mid-Cycle Review was accepted by the Northwest Commission on Community, on, on Colleges and Universities, which is a reflection of the dedication of our faculty, staff, and leadership. I extend my sincere appreciation to all who contributed to this successful review. Tonight's Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Second Quarter Financial Update will outline progress in stabilizing our budget. While rising personnel costs and revenue shifts remain challenges, we are addressing them through enrollment-driven growth and operational efficiencies. We will also discuss our five-year financial forecast and plans to mitigate the projected ten percent ending fund balance shortage. On the enrollment and student success front, Lane's enrollment continues to rise, reinforcing our focus on expanding access and student success. This year, I started a new program for students. The President's Student Leadership Circle, launched in February, is bringing together twenty students for leadership conversations and skill building with professionals across various industries here in Eugene. Supported by the LCC Foundation and Student Government Association, I am pleased that this program will help students develop leadership competencies. Lane remains active in national artificial intelligence discussions as well, following the rise of generative AI. At a recent CEO AI bootcamp that I attended, I engaged with sixty community college CEOs from fourteen states around several topics, including Lane's Presidential Task Force on AI. Lane's leadership in AI was also featured in the Community College Daily, which is a national publication, and the Chronicle of Higher Education, also a national publication. Fostering belonging and psychological safety is a top priority here at the institution for our colleges' climate. This month, we hosted a forum on psychological safety with Professor Young of Portland State University, where sixty employees participated in a discussion on building an inclusive and supportive campus environment. And in the coming days, we are going to be offering the college community Hate-Free Zone signage. The signage will say, "You Belong," and will be placed throughout our facilities. These signs will include information on how to access the LCC complaint process to report discriminatory activity with anonymous reporting options available. As you know, this is a critical year for advocacy. So tomorrow, I will be joining trustees, faculty, and classified union leadership in Salem for Community College Lobby Day, where we will advocate for funding and key initiatives that support community colleges. I close by saying how grateful I am to the students, faculty, and staff for their dedication. Together, we are strengthening Lane's position at a leader, as a leader in higher education, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bolger. The next report on the agenda is this, from the Student Government Association. Sophie, will you please provide the report?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say I'm so glad to be back. It feels like forever since I've been in the room. So, that's nice. Uh, also, uh, student government has been doing a lot of advocacy work. Um, we have a couple of students joining President Bolger, uh, at the Capitol. Not only today, we're, we're there, but also tomorrow to do advocacy meeting with our representatives, uh, like Lisa. And, uh, we'll be advocating for things like House Bill thirty-one eighty-two, which is student basic needs, uh, which is really, really important. So, uh, I think all the board members should keep that in the forefront of their mind. Uh, we've also been meeting with the Council of Clubs, which is kind of the group of students, uh, that represent all of the ratified clubs on campus, and working with them to get them integrated into student, uh, student government. So we'll, we'll have that stake in, in that part of the student body as well. We've also been working on the grade appeal policy, uh, at the Senate, uh, talking about the student perspective and the faculty perspective and how, and what we think to submit that to the, the committee that's overseeing the grade appeal policy. Right now, our elections are also going on. Uh, starting in spring, we will hold the actual elections. We're working up to, uh, like, let students know that elections are opening. We did a panel, uh, where we had a bunch of students on the student government answering questions, and that went really well. And yeah, uh, that's all I have to share right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next report on the agenda is from LCC EA. Adrian, would you please provide the LCC EA report?
Good evening, uh, Sophie, President Bolger, members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to give a report at this hour as opposed to, um, the later hour scheduled for reports in the past. So thank you for that adjustment. Um, I'm gonna speak briefly on a few topics and have, uh, provided a copy of the report for, uh, to Celia for posting on Board Docs. Has a lot of data, charts, and, uh, graphs for you to review, and I hope you'll take some time to, uh, look at those. So one topic I'm gonna share a little bit about is related to faculty workloads. You've been hearing a lot from faculty members about, um, the, the, the heavy uncompensated workloads that faculty are experiencing, the, um, extenuating hours that faculty are working each week, uh, with thirty-eight percent report, reporting working fifty hours per, uh, per week or more, and nineteen percent working sixty hours per week or more. Part, this is due in part to, one of the reasons for this relates to the lecture versus lab rate, uh, that we have at LCC. Uh, so you've heard a lot from faculty, um, today and other, other days about the lab rate. So what this essentially means is that, uh, faculty who are teaching lab classes, or any class that has a lab, and, and, you know, when we say lab, you might think of things like science, but this includes, you know, a wide range of types of classes. All of our classes in the trades, the entire, uh, uh, Advanced Technology Division, Health professions, um, and on and on. Just really a very wide range of classes. So faculty who are teaching lecture lab classes that are a combination of lecture and lab are spending twenty percent more time in the classroom every week. And, um, faculty who are teaching lab only spend, on average, fifty percent more in the class each week. So that really produces a lot of stress in terms of their workloads. Um, at the same time, uh, across our campus, student FTE, we're very excited about this, has increased over the past three years by twenty-six point five percent, which is really phenomenal. Um, however, during the same time period, faculty FTE has decreased by four point one percent. Full-time faculty positions have decreased by four point one percent. So this is based on data provided by IR, the enrollment data, the HR faculty rosters, the official audit statement. Um, and, uh, this has really produced a significant stress. We're very excited about all the, the additional students. At the same time, it adds a lot of pressure when we are serving the students with a decreased number of faculty. During this same period of time, however, management FTE has increased by nine point two percent. Um, a little bit more information, I wanted to, uh, encourage you all to, uh, fully engage in your fiduciary responsibility to provide oversight and leadership on the budget. Uh, we have a lot of questions about the projections for this year and initial planning for next year. Uh, these questions include, why do estimates for this year's revenue include only two to three point five percent enrollment growth when student credit enrollment is up seven percent for all terms so far this year? So that has a significant impact on the revenue for this year, which, when you carry forward and make forecasts for future years, that, uh, that compounds. What guidance can you provide about projections and planning for next year? For instance, why did the Fund One budget for management positions increase from an actual of five point five million dollars last year to six point five million this year and seven point five million next year? In addition, we've heard a lot about sub-fund deficits in Fund Nine, but what are the sub-fund surpluses in Fund Nine and the rest of the funds? And, and what is the net ending fund balance that we expect to see when the official audit is finally available? And importantly, to what extent does the budget reflect our values and an investment in our core institutional mission of student services and instruction? So one of the areas where we find, uh, a disinvestment in faculty persists is evidenced by the data that we have available to us through the Budget Office, um, on contracted faculty salaries. Um, and I'm speaking about the aggregate, the total expenditures. So faculty salaries from FY twenty-four to, uh, the projection for next year at the aggregate are increasing seven percent. Over the same period, um, management increases are thirty-five percent. I think there might be a typo in there. I'll have to, uh, verify that one on the chart. But the, um, the, the total increase over, from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-six is thirty-five percent, uh, over two years for management salaries in Fund One. During the same period, for faculty, it's seven percent. There's also a graph of this. You can take a look at it and see kind of what that looks like visually. There's also a graph of this. You can take a look at it and see what that looks like visually. And this is all the data provided by the Budget Office. There is also a slide, which is too detailed to review verbally, but I hope you'll take some time to review it, that shows the unaudited ending fund balances for FY '24. So one of the things that we've heard about recently is sub-fund deficit in Fund IX. And there is, based on the end-of-year FY '24, $1.4, $1.5 million sub-fund deficit in Fund IX. At the same time, there are sub-fund surpluses in Fund IX, amounting to $10.7 million, which gives us the ending fund balance of $9.2 million. So while there are sub-fund deficits in each of the funds, there are also sub-fund surpluses that are much larger, such that the net for the ending fund balances for all the funds is in excess of $86 million. Hope you'll take some time to really kind of think through that and look at the data that's available. And last but not least, I would love to share some of the exciting activities that LCC EA faculty members have been engaged in in terms of advocacy. We're heavily involved in working together with the legislators and lobbying at the Capitol to increase funding for community colleges. We spent a weekend of strategic planning at the OEA Community College Council in February and spent a full morning meeting with Representative Hudson and Representative Ruiz. On Lobby Day, President's Day, our faculty joined our OEA counterparts from throughout Oregon for small group meetings to advocate for pay parity for part-time faculty and improving the CCSF and really amply funding education in our state. We have faculty representation working alongside President Bulger tomorrow at OCCA Lobby Day and look forward to advocating for funding for our colleges. And we've had numerous LCC EA faculty participate in providing testimony on the Pay Parity Bill at the State House. And we're very excited to report that it passed out of committee yesterday. And one of the reasons why this bill is so critical is that it will not only require pay parity, it will provide the funding for pay parity to the colleges. We would encourage LCC to take a more progressive position and to advocate in support of this bill and to work together with your colleagues at OCCA to support the bill. It provides funding to help you pay your faculty salaries. So can't imagine something that constitutes a win-win more than that. We're also planning several events, both at the national and local level, to further engage in legislative advocacy. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The final report is from LCC EF. Frankie, will you please provide the LCC EF report?
Yep, sure will. Good evening, board members, President Bulger, and SGA President Gibson. This year has been an exciting one for our union and the dedicated classified professionals we represent. And I'm pleased to share some developments. COPE Committee activation. Our Committee on Political Education, COPE, is now fully operational and has commenced the process of candidate endorsements. This initiative underscores our commitment to advocating for policies and leaders who support our mission and values. Participation in Lobby Day. Tomorrow, our COPE Officer, Fiora Starchild Wolf, and I will join President Bulger and other Lain Community College representatives for Lobby Day. This marks our inaugural participation, and we're eager to engage in dialogues that advance the interests of our students, our members, faculty, and community colleges as a whole. Fiscal re-opener bargaining. This year, we enter a fiscal re-opener bargaining phase at a time when classified employees are facing unprecedented financial strain. Inflation, rising costs, and economic stability are hitting workers' families hard. In Lain County, the cost of living is 6.6% higher than the national average. The average monthly grocery bill for a family of three is approximately $940, expenses that continue to climb while wages struggle to keep pace. Our members are already feeling the weight of these economic realities, just as a college is grappling with financial uncertainties. But for classified professionals, this isn't just about balancing a budget. It's about keeping food on the table, staying in our homes, and providing for our families without the constant fear of falling behind. We are committed to ensuring that those who keep this college running every day can also afford to live and thrive in the community that they serve. As we move forward with bargaining, I ask that you keep the classified professionals and their families in your thoughts. We are the backbone of the college, dedicating our time, our skills, and passion to ensure the Lain Community College thrives. We love this institution and believe in its mission, but we also need to know that the college values and supports us in return. Just as the board works hard to secure the resources and stability this college needs to succeed, we ask that you extend the same commitment to the classified professionals who keep the doors open, enroll our students, keep the students supported, and campus running every day. We don't seek more than what is fair. Only the ability to care for our families, live with dignity, and continue serving this college with the dedication it deserves. Thank you for your time, your continued commitment to making Lain Community College a place where everyone, students, faculty, and staff can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. I'm going to go ahead and be pulling Board Policy 275, Board Policy 320, Board Policy 2210, and Board Policy 2340. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Austin.
I just wanted to approve the consent agenda with those removals and make a motion for that.
Is there a second? Okay, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all oppose nay, and that passes unanimously. So looking at the agenda for the evening, we have a very, very full agenda. We also are going to be having an executive session after this meeting, which we're expecting to take 45 minutes. So with the current items on the agenda, we're already looking at getting out of here at 10 o'clock. And so with that, I'm expecting that working through these board policies is probably going to take 20 to 30 minutes. And I wanted to get the board's feedback on potentially having that discussion at our next meeting, rather than trying to plow through it tonight, which will take us to 10:30.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table those items until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll ask for unanimous consent to support that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all oppose nay, and that item will be moved to our next available agenda. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay, moving into our main items, let's go to our action items. The first is Board Operating Agreements. Can we go ahead and pull up that document? There's, I believe, three sets of options that we have to work through as a board to get that document finalized.
A question also in the interest of meeting time efficiency. So as far as I understand, there were, I think, two sets, maybe it's three, but I don't know, two sets of edits that were shared today. I looked at one. I didn't even have a chance to look at the other. I'm wondering if the folks who have provided those might be willing to get together in a subcommittee format and work through those things between now and the next board meeting beginning of next month, so that we don't have to do that in this format and with this board time right now.
I'd be happy to meet. I don't know if we'll come to a consensus, but I'm happy to meet ahead of time to get as close as we can. Yep, yeah, we'll work that out after this meeting and find.
I'd love to table this.
Well, so I think we're moving, well, that's on the BPs. Let's move into our Board Operating Agreements and get through this today. I think we can work through this, correct?
I was referring to these Board Operating Agreements because I think that's my understanding.
No, no, we already, I think we're good on these ones. The Board Policies were the one where you got the two different sets of edits. So I think there's just two or three items that we have to go through. So on this first one, the main idea is, is in, so Bullet Three, we were going to add "end community members", but then we were going to add a second sentence. And the idea was, I had suggested Option Two, adding "end community benefit", and then I think Kevin had come in with the other two options. First was while, or maybe it was Julie that had suggested while balancing community benefit. And then Austin, or sorry, Kevin suggested while representing the public interest. And so I think the first question that I would probably want to ask is, do people have strong reverences between community benefit and public interest in this statement? Kevin?
Our Board Policy, existing Board Policy 2200, the title is Board of Education Duties and Responsibilities. Within the policy, it says, "The Board of Education is committed to fulfilling its responsibilities too", and there's a whole list of things. The number one on that list is represent the public interest. So I think it would be in the board's best interest to align with the same language that's found in the existing Board Policy, and that's why I suggested that.
The second, Option Two? Is that what you're referring to?
Be the third, Option Three on this red line.
Right.
And again, I think we can wordsmith a little bit more in a minute, but right now, I think just public interest versus community benefit is, I think, one of the choices on the table. I think I saw Austin. And then Denise?
Absolutely. The document to your right, there's a poster there. It includes our vision, mission, and values. Our mission is that we are, Lain is the community's college. Under diversity, the diversity value, we had mentioned community multiple times. Innovation even mentions community. One of the, in collaboration with partnership, it mentions communities. And overall, there is a, and then under sustainability, it speaks of global communities, sustainable communities, and environmental justice for communities. Our vision, mission, and strategic plan mentions community in numerous areas. And with that in mind, I would actually prefer the community benefit language as opposed to the public interest, although I think public interest is assumed in the community benefit. I think that aligning with our mission, values, and vision is really critical in our Board Governance documents.
Denise next?
Okay, whoops, sorry, I got off. Is it possible to combine, or do people feel that that's redundant? As in saying, representing the public and community interests?
Just really briefly, I would support that.
I understand the, just to finish my point, I understand the point that Kevin is making as far as just having consistency in language, and I understand how we're using the word "community" in our values and statements which are posted throughout. So maybe it's a win-win if we just combine that.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, is there's some support for basically having both sets of words or combining them in some fashion? How about?
Well, representing the community and public interest. Just that simple.
How about Option Two with the additions "in service of the public interest"?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I am not going to spend too much more wordsmithing on this because I think we're tipping into diminishing returns on this document. So yes.
Be good.
Fine.
Okay, so we'll do Option Two with the addition "in service of the public interest". Okay, so the next sort of Option One, Option Two was related to the board will not tolerate crosstalkings, interruptions, or personal attacks. And the question is, do we want to keep this in or do we not want to keep this in? Any discussion? I see Denise.
Well, the first time, I'll just repeat what I said before. I do not, I favor positive language, and I think that that's already messaged as far as respect, curiosity, and commitment to problem solving. And I really don't see this as a necessary or beneficial message. I think is, we know what the rules and regulations are that govern elected officials. And so I don't care for this language.
Any other discussion? Could I just do a straw poll of who wants it in and who wants it out? So who thinks it's important to keep in?
I don't really care.
I don't really care.
Okay, seeing no one that cares about keeping it in, I'm going to suggest we take it out on Denise's recommendation. Okay, I think we're just going to remove that. And then the, I believe, the final... Sorry, I think, okay. So then this was, I believe that Steve had risen, brought this point up, and I think we were actually confused about what change you wanted. And so the first one was the first change, we thought, but I think the second one is actually what you were hoping for.
On the consensus and decisions?
Yes. Is that we would add, "Decisions will be made by majority vote, subject to Roberts rules", not remove the strive for consensus part?
That's right.
Okay, so unless there's other folks that want to raise red flags, we'll accept Option Two. And moving on, is there any? Okay, so then for, oh, sorry, go ahead, Austin.
Yeah, so now that we've gone through that, is there anything else we need to cover before doing a motion to approve?
There's one more Option One, Option Two here up at the top. And so the board will actively support the president executing the college's mission and publicly demonstrate confidence in president's leadership, A, to advance the success and well-being of the campus community, or B, achieve the president's goals and the strategic plan approved by the board. And I see Kevin's hand raised.
Addressing your question there, I would, I prefer Option Two. And I just want to point out, there's some red lines we need to consider regarding how things get on the agenda.
Yes, that would probably make sense because there was an edit today that we should fill everybody in on. Does anybody else have a stance on Option One or Option Two here?
I prefer one.
I do too.
So do I.
Austin?
Two for me.
Okay, sorry, I'm losing track here. Let me. So Option One was, I had Julie and Sophie, and I had for Option Two, I had Kevin and Austin.
We're happy to. She wants to say something, so do I.
Yes.
I like that this first option is kind of student-facing and more community-facing, and it aligns with our mission statement. But Option Two, when talking about the president's goals and strategic plan, we should entrust that the president is going to do those things. So I kind of feel like there's some give and take as to Option Two is... And while I'm thinking about it more and reading it more, I do think Option Two might be a better choice just because we should entrust that President Bulger is going to advance the success and well-being of the campus and its students, so changed my mind.
I've got Austin, then Denise?
Oh, that was an old hand. I apologize. You can move on.
Denise?
Yes, I'm in favor of Option One. I like the expansiveness of campus community. And I agree with Sophie that it would be inclusive. It just seems like it's a little bit more formal language to be, you know, strategic plan and things like that. And I think Option One is inclusive language. That's just my take on it.
Eve, do you have any preference?
Yeah, I would also support Option Two. Our job is to review and ultimately decide on the strategic plan. That is our major input. And it includes the, well, it basically is all about the well-being of the campus community.
I see three on one side, and, oh, sorry, go ahead, Julie?
So I look at that a little differently. This is under communications and collaboration, under our board agreements. So this is about us, right? And the statement is, is that we would actively support and publicly support the president in executing the college's mission and demonstrate confidence in the president. So that's our employee. We hired her. We are working with her to do the president's goals and strategic planning, all of that. And so publicly, we should be demonstrating confidence in her leadership. And so, and... And so and not when you start to then devolve it down to these very specifics, then the only thing we're publicly confident is her leadership in achieving those goals and strategic plans. It's like, no, I'm confident in her leadership period because that's what we do. If there's a problem with that, that should be doing a conversation in closed session. So this is about publicly demonstrating confidence in our leaders and the leadership of our president of this college. And so therefore, I think it should be number one, because it's the advancing the success and well being of the entire campus community. And that's what we should publicly be doing if we're going to demonstrate that confidence. So that's my view and take on that statement. Why I choose one.
Okay, as of this moment, I have caught Kevin, Austin and Steve that have suggested number two. I have Julie and Denise that have suggested number one. And Sophie, I'd heard you had known number one first, and then it may be for number two.
Yeah, I could see the both sides of this. And so, yeah, I I think that we should definitely be, you know, focused on being open to the community and using that inclusive language while also, you know, having the this number two outlined. So I'm really, yeah.
How would folks about just?
You're in the middle, huh?
Yeah.
How would folks feel about simply putting these two together and doing both, having both of them say, having an end and then having them both there?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Can I ask the president what her thoughts are?
Sure.
Well, not to make this difficult. Not to make it difficult at all. I favor the first one and because it is, it is broader. And the advancing the success and well being of the campus community includes the goals of the president, whatever they happen to be that are approved by the board and then and also the strategic plan, which, as everyone knows, is approved by the board. So I think there's a, those are implied in the first one. But there are other matters in the first one as well that happen along the way in the leadership of the president. So I would favor the first one, if you're if you're asking.
Thank you, just curious.
I mean, I saw that we have ever, you know, people that sort of three are falling on this side, three maybe on the other side, but that generally folks were okay with us adding both of these things. And so I think we should just go ahead and have advanced the success and well being of the campus community and to achieve the president's goals and strategic plan approved by the board. And unless I have a significant, somebody saying that's not appropriate, I think that will, let's go with that. Okay, let's loop back for one moment to the second page. And just to say that Kevin and I met with Vince Adams this morning. And for meeting structure and content, we added the fifth bullet in red to say, so so we we accepted the bullet just before that, that we we came to agreement on it. And then we said that in general, once a board agenda goes public, we're only going to adjust it if it's needed for operational purposes as requested by the president. Or there is a urgent pressing need that we need to change for the good of the order as determined by the board.
I was there at the meeting as well, just wanted to let everyone know.
And so Kevin and I and the president met with Vince this morning, and we thought this was a a good option.
I had, I just have a question.
Yes, please.
But thanks for the clarity, because I was kind of curious where that language came from on the adjusted. On the, it's the one above that the getting something on the agenda?
Yes.
It it seems wonky to me that there's, we can ask three board members and they can agree, or I can just simply send an email to just the chair and and bypass two other board members. And then the other one is the work session poll, and I don't know what a work session poll is.
This, yeah, so the work session poll is a new item, which is effectively the same as with the agreement of at least three board members, but it's done in writing instead of verbally at the end of a meeting. We will go, we'll do one later tonight, so you'll get to see it in action during the board member questions and comments section. With regards to via email to the chair and president, generally, this should be done if it's like a motion that is timely and is not going to require a lot of staff, any really any staff time to prepare board discussion. So it's it's generally, please try to use the options that with the agreement of at least three board members during the meeting or through the work session poll. But yes, if there is something that is timely and like a motion, then I think that that's something that would be appropriate to try and add as they come.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to ask for a motion to approve this document as drafted.
Chair.
Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, with that, I so move that we approve this document as drafted and amended.
Denise?
Second, I second it.
Okay.
So may I, oh, may I briefly speak on my motion?
Yeah, please do.
Excellent, yeah, so really quick, I really appreciate the work everyone put into this, especially the input from Oregon School Board Association and everything. So I appreciate that. And yeah, I look forward to the implementation of this and to move forward.
Okay, like to vote by acclamation, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And all opposed, please say nay. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for working on that with us and look forward to working with you under these new operating agreements. Okay, we are on to our second quarter financial update. Thank you very much, President Bulger.
Sure. And we'll have Vice President Flath come and start talking to us about the second quarter financial update. And I think that there's a slide deck with this.
Yes, there is.
Thank you, Kara.
That would be great, thank you.
Your is not very cooperative this evening. I'm gonna let Brett, Brett, oh, there it is.
We can visualize, Grayden.
The interwebs are moving slowly.
Thank you, thanks for being to be, thanks for letting me be here today to present to you, members of the board, giving you a quick update on our second quarter financial update. If we can go to the next slide. So just to highlight what we'll discuss today, we'll quickly review where the December first quarter financial forecast was. And just to remind you, the first quarter would be the first three months of the fiscal year, so July, August, September. We'll look at the second quarter update, which would be the next three months, October, November, December, and what changes have transpired since the first and the second quarter financial update, what the updated five year forecast looks like, and then how that looks as far as the board policy and the 10% ending fund balance and strategies that we can discuss with that. Just for reference, hopefully you received a fabulous spreadsheet that everybody really wanted to read, you know, in great detail. So hopefully you had a chance to look at that. We can go to the next page. So just to recap what December looked like, we brought in first quarter update, looked at like our first quarter ending balance. And I will keep emphasizing, one of the things we really want to strategize and look at is during our current year, what does our current year total revenues, resources look like? And total expenditures requirements look like and what your ending fund balance for that is? So when I look at these numbers, it's just within that current year. So we we know we have ending fund balance that rolls over year to year, but the goal is to keep that intact and just focus on current year. That's probably step one, what I would say. So as we look at any of these particular pages, just know that projected balance is all the current year outlook. But then we go down to the second slot, second bubble section. That's where we'll look at the beginning fund balance plus what we look at for the current year, looking at $7 million. And just to remind you, the after the first quarter financial update, we went back to the drawing board, looked at that $1.5 million deficit and had some strategies on what we could do to mitigate that $1.5 million. So we reduced supply budgets, we reduced travel, we had some IT budget savings we could see. And then we're also reviewing all of our current position fillings to make sure are those really strategically what we need this year? Can we hold them for future years? So then we get that picture, we looked at that, made about a million dollars impact. And now we fast forward to this second quarter. We can go to the next page. So next quarter come March, we're still looking at projected revenues for the year, 98 million. The operating requirements were at 100 million. We're still looking at a $1.4 million deficit, even with the mitigation strategies that we did in the first year in January. So pause that thought. Our beginning fund balance is 9.2 million. I've told you the audit is not completed yet. There's still some tweaking that we're working with the auditor, so that is a positive change. I still say, hold your breath, audit is not completed yet, so I'll put that caveat in there. Adding into that, our newly projected deficit of 1.4 million. We are looking at a projected ending fund balance, 7.8 million, which still gets us to 7.7%, which is not the 10% board policy that we'd like to see. And second, it's still not positive within the same year. So those are two things we just want to keep looking at. Overall, drivers of the deficit are still rising personnel costs in part time staffing, which is great when you have increased enrollment. But we also removed the forecast for the 1.4 million for the employee tax retention credit. That's what comes from the IRS. I will tell you, we again called them to see if we are still on the list for the tax retention credit. We are, we're in the queue, which we've been in the queue since a year ago. So still waiting, I don't think we can guarantee that money is going to be here. The other thing I would caution, when we count on revenues that are one time revenue stream to fund our ongoing operations, that is the challenge that you would see with this. So we've removed that from our forecast in the event that we don't get it. If we do receive that money this year, we're going to party it up and let you know right away. And it will still help mitigate that, particularly that 1.4 million. So if we go to the next slide. So just to highlight changes from first quarter, second quarter, I already gave you a free preview of what that looks like, the revenue. When you look at the first quarter, there's not a lot of data for you to look at. You look at the second quarter again, obviously, you're six months in. It's still not as much data as us finance people would like, but you're still refining that as you go longer into the quarter. So what we refine is we have a revenue decrease of 3.2 million. Again, part of that, and I'm just summarizing any changes and what that might look like. The ending fund balance would have increased 600,000 because of some changes in our audit adjustments. And then we removed the tax retention credit, which was 1.4 million. And then we're seeing a decreased collection in what we originally anticipated for property taxes, tuition and then transfers in and out of general fund. What I will say is the tuition, the tuition forecast is based on the two, the two terms that have already transpired and then an estimation working with our institutional research team of one, who's fabulous. But looking at what that particular spring term might look like, it's a forecast. So again, this is all a forecast, that's what we have built into these particular revenue projections. If you go look at expenditures, that did decrease by 4 million. We're projecting 2.8 million less in salary and benefits. We've refined some of our OPE rates when you look at spending less in positions, but we are still spending more in part time faculty, which is to be expected when we have. Sure, do you want it to?
Do you have questions now or at the end?
I would love if we could do it at the end, we will, that's okay. So, but we're still seeing higher costs. We're also projecting 1.2 million less for the transfers out. We talked about making up that 1 million from last year and this year. The numbers are going to be difficult to sustain that, so we're pausing that and going to have to continue that sub fund deficit. So that's kind of one big change to that. Next slide. So to give you the five year forecast, and again, that longer sheet has all the all the levers that are included and what a forecast is. This will give us a snapshot based on all of those levers, what we think our future will look like based on what we're spending right now. So 2025, we're looking at just in current year, you know, revenues minus expenditures. We're looking at depleting ending fund balance by 1.4 million. You again go to fiscal year 28, you were looking like we might break even based on our forecast. And then go on to 2027, it's 1.7 million off the ending fund balance. And again, we're taking that $7 million that we're saying we're ending with and some, it's higher than that. But from 2024, we're taking out of it in '25, adding a little bit in '26, taking out of it in '27, taking out of it in '28 and '29. So each of those years, we're slowly depleting what we have as that ending fund balance. And again, this is part of the forecast. We can go to the next slide. What I wanted to give a picture of is based on the board policy of the 10% ending fund balance, which should be our goal to get to. We're looking at the gap between the blue and the red charts that are projected ending fund balance when you take that 24 balance, roll it over to 25, 26, 27, 28. By fiscal year 2029, we would be looking at about an $800,000 ending fund balance, which is substantially different than our $12 million that we would need per the board policy. So if you look at just forecast based on what we have in that long sheet of all those levers, which is, you know, we even built in a higher tuition rate increase, so tuition rate, tuition, you know, credits, all those increasing, plus costs increase. So it just slowly kind of eats at that. And it's kind of a picture of what we're looking at this year, continuing year to year, year. So keep that in mind. And we can come back to this if you have questions. Can we go to the next slide? This particular one, what I, what I'm trying to demonstrate, and I, I I'm not saying that it's reasonable that you cut 22 positions in fiscal year 26 to mitigate your 10% ending fund balance. But what the charts and all the indicators that we're seeing is that if we continue on the same path we're on, we're going to slowly deplete our ending fund balance. And every position in every place I've been in, when you have all these indicators, that's your warning signs, right? We have time to prepare, we have time to plan, so that when we get to fiscal year 2029, we don't have to increase tuition 23% to cover to get to 10% ending fund balance, nor do we have to cut 44 positions to get to a 10% ending fund balance. So this is meant to give you, so we're looking at ending fund balance based on our forecast of 26 getting an 8 million, then it goes down to 6.2 to 4.8, and then you get to the, it's almost 900,000. So this this picture will, if you, if you hear anything I say, it will give you an idea of what our picture looks like in the future. So the hope is this sparks the board, working with President Bulger, on what is her plan and her strategy within the next three or four years that we can get on track with where we can get to the 10% ending fund balance, especially given we have an unknown landscape coming on. You know, it's different in education right now, we have to be aware. Everything that's happening, it's hard to say. We're hoping that it's going to work by fiscal year 2029, because President Bulger has all these indications that we have some things we have to work on, we have to strategize. So she will have to come up with an operational plan to present to the board, what do we want to do with these pictures? Does that make sense? So the last particular, last slide, questions? But I did want to give, that's a lot of information, I know you have questions. That gives you a couple of things, I just want to remind you what's coming up. You know, in April, we're going to have tuition rate increases that the board increases, decreases, stay the same, that the board will be approving. We also, in the next, whether it's April, May, we'll have the composite financial index that the heck is working on, releasing a report in June. So we'll want to have that discussion. And then we're also looking at the third quarter update in May. And we do have the audit report where Moss Adams will come and present our audit to you. Again, we are working on getting our audit right, our numbers. And so we have requested a 30 day extension to the end of April. There's been a lot of intensive work put into the audit. We have a new audit firm, which I'll remind you, and they've been great to work with. We also have a new financial statement preparation system, because we've used the same monitors that have helped with both of those. And then we have two GASB implementations, which are pretty large, that should have been implemented last year and the year before that weren't. So all of those calculations and everything that comes with a new audit firm is really challenging for that process, and we want to make sure we get it right. This is the first audit with Moss Adams, and we're working hard to do that. The state has already authorized this, so if we don't need it, that's great. But we don't want to come into a late audit and then not have that approval. So I wanted to give you that update. Now I'm sure you have questions.
Yeah, I've got Denise and then Kevin.
Yeah, I've got Denise and then Kevin, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Denise, you're up first. It looks like we lost Austin.
Okay. Can, can you put this, this page or the screen up? I think it was maybe the second one that has about the property taxes, that grouping, first quarter, second quarter.
Yeah, it looks like page five.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm just telling for the.
Yeah, I didn't mark a page.
No, you're fine.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So I was just wondering about the, the clarity, I guess I would say. On the revenue decreases, would it, I would like to see, or I'm asking the question, property taxes are not controlled by us. And I would like to see what that number is, the, the decreased forecast for property taxes separated, right, from tuition and transfers. And I also need a little bit more reminder probably about what falls into the category of transfers. So that's part of my question there.
Sure, I will, I can get you more specific information and send it to the board for specifics on property taxes, tuitions. Transfers is going to be funds that, part of, part of the change in the transfers is twofold. It's other funds that will be transferring funds into the general fund. We had one particular debt fund. It's, it's just interesting how it's been happening, and so we've adjusted it. But we, we have a partial debt payment for our Titan Court that gets transferred into the general fund from nine and then gets transferred out of the general fund into our debt service fund. So we eliminated the middleman and we're transferring it directly from Fund Nine to our debt service fund. There, there's no reason for books to transfer. So part of that is that and part of that is other funds. But I can get you more details on that.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, valuable to see those categories, right? And thank you for your explanation about the Titan Court. And again, that property taxes, since we can't control that. And the other, I'm wondering, even though I don't see it on, on any of the slides, how, how much money do we receive from federal grants?
From federal programs in general, not including, not including financial aid. It's about $7 million a year. If you were to include financial aid, that's another 18, 18.2 million.
Okay, because in relationship to that, I wonder about the, you know, we should all have concerns about that, and we probably do. And so I don't know what that means as far as plans for that.
I would say, trustee, that we are watching that closely today, today. But tomorrow might change, of course, but today we don't have any concerns, given the guidance that we've received.
Thank you.
I have Kevin and then Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Kara. Thanks for not putting spreadsheets on the slides. Appreciate it.
The spreadsheets.
Yeah, I know. Slide number six, if, if you could bring that up. So I, I want some clarification. I think maybe something's mislabeled. So the, the yellow color, you know, ending yearly balance, that's not really the ending year balance. That's the decrease to the ending year balance. Is that correct?
Yes, from the, so what this, this doesn't include your ending fund balance that rolls over year to year. I just wanted you to see what, what would be depleted out of the rolling ending year balance. So yes.
Okay, thanks. And then on slide number eight. To, to achieve the 10% ending fund balance, is it a combination of the tuition increase and the FTE reduction, or is it one or the other?
It would be one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kara, for the good news, as always.
I like to spread good news. I've spent my.
What do they say, the dismal, the dismal science? The, maybe you said it, maybe I missed it, but could you just tell us the assumptions you used regarding state dollars that we would receive over this period as, you know, percentage increase or a flat or whatever? As, and same for increasing enrollment or decreasing or flat or whatever, what numbers do you use for those?
Sure, and I'll, the, the state numbers are the governor's budget. He's giving me a six. It's a 5.84%, but I was making sure that's the governor's budget. And then the following biennium, it's a 7.38% increase. So we're banking on that, on the state funds. And then credit enrollment change is 2%, but the tuition rate change would be at 5%.
So 2% increase per, in number of, in FTE per year, is that what that means?
Correct.
So 2% more year over year throughout this, whatever it is, four, five-year period, analysis period?
Yes.
I, I, this is a really useful reference document. I think maybe just adding those, those assumptions in there would be, would be helpful.
Okay, sure.
I'm sorry, can you repeat? So the governor's budget would be 5.8% for this next two years? And the legislative proposal, is that 6.9? Is that right?
The, well, the, the current governor's budget is 5.89. Now, what OCCA wants is, is more like 8, 8%? So what, what this is built on is where the current governor's budget was recommended.
And then you, you mentioned another number.
I'm saying that the biennium after that, so '28, '29, we were built, we built in 7.38%.
7.3, okay. Okay, and then can we go back a slide? And back another one? Okay, on FY '25, it looks like our deficit is 0.4 million, but it's listed as 1.4 million. Can you clarify?
The projected deficit in this current forecast.
Oh, I'm doing my math wrong, sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, and then we're looking at enrollment growth 2%, tuition growth 5% is what you said? Okay, and then looking at the revenues for this year, if we could go back to that slide?
This one?
Yeah. Or actually, let's go back one more. Okay, so in this slide where we're, we're looking at our projected resources, you said that was based upon actuals for fall and winter term and projections for spring term?
Correct.
Okay, so what was our enrollment growth in fall and winter compared to last year?
7%.
Okay, and what are we projecting for spring term?
It's too early to tell, isn't it? I mean, you may be projecting something, but it's incredibly early to tell, even though it's what, four weeks out or so? And it's really early to tell.
I believe we had a 3.5 expected enrollment growth per term with the aspiration hopes of maybe 5%.
So this is assuming that we'll have enrollment growth of three and a half relative to the year before, which is less than what we've seen these first two terms?
They, in the, in the forecast for fiscal year 2025, what we did is work with our institutional research expert to look at previous patterns, and she provided an estimate of what she thinks the spring term looks like based on all of the current things. And that's what we have built in there. So it's not, it's built on a number with her, and I can get her exact, get you exactly what that percentage is. I didn't write that one down.
Okay, so we had the 7%, the last two terms, knowing what percentage is built into this analysis would be, would be helpful.
Nope, for sure.
I think that largely answered my questions. And Julie, please.
Just, I'm just going to ask the question. So I know the board has a, a policy of a 10% general fund. But I also know that we, as a society, are about to walk into an incredibly uncertain federal funding world. So a lot of people are going to. So when do we, as an institution, dip into the general fund? I mean, I would imagine that, I mean, the, the balance, I would imagine it's there like a reserve for us to touch, right? I mean, otherwise, why do we have it?
That's a great question. And what I'll say is, we already are dipping into it, and we do dip into it every year. And if we continue to do that, we won't have a reserve to dip into.
I see. So, so is the 10% then the goal? Or is it just because it's a policy? I mean, is that the thing that's going to get us in a place where we have a comfortable reserve to say, weather the storm of a government shutdown? You know, I'm just throwing something out there. So it's like, can we hold space for six months of revenue, you know, in our general fund? Is that the goal? Is that why we have 10%? I mean, I'm just trying to get to, it just, it's this living number. I want it to be a living number for me. And right now, it's just a board policy, and I see the impact that it's having by trying to put that much money away. And yet I see what's going on over down here. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, should that just be adjusted and make it 7% so that we can try to make those numbers? You know, and have it be more reasonable? Or I'm just trying to understand, you know, maybe I'm just asking a question I shouldn't ask, but I'm just trying to understand how we use it.
There was, if Reddit were here, then he'd be able to talk about some of the histories, history of those, those percentages. I, if I recall correctly, that percentage was higher at one time at Lane Community College. But I don't think anybody in the room can verify that. But I think it was, it was higher at one time. So the board, perhaps in its, in its infinite wisdom, said, we need at least a month, three months of reserve just in case something happens. We want to be able to cover certain expenses at minimum salaries. And our salaries currently are how much a month? $8 million. And so it would be perhaps, that, that would be an explanation perhaps.
There we go.
And if I can add to that, I'm, I would, you know, I would suggest where the president look at a plan to get to 7, 8, 9, 10%. And because of the landscape and all the things you're saying is why we should look at 10%. Because we don't, there are a lot of unknowns. And if the federal government were to discontinue the payments, and I said we get, let's take financial aid out of it, we receive $8 million if that were to stop, our reserve wouldn't cover that.
Got it. Yeah, okay, I'm just, you know, I had to deal with my other, my company cheese.
I appreciate it. I appreciate, good question.
I have Austin and then Steve in the queue.
You can go ahead and skip me, actually. That's totally fine.
Yeah, picking up on the, kind of the thoughts that Julie had. My, my experience here on the board and other places is honestly that it's not so much that we would need to, you know, scoop 10, you know, use 10%, $10 million in, in this case, in any one year, right? We probably, if you look back over the last 20 years, it's never happened that we needed that much reserve over that short a period of time. There's probably, though, evidence of a two or three or four-year period, and that's basically what you're showing us right now, where we were consistently, you know, not making the budget and had to dip in at the rate of 2 million a year or something like that. So I can imagine a rationale that says, you know, that we would build that said, you know, let's look in our history a little bit and see the lengths of time where, where we were running a deficit and at what amount, and therefore, and then it takes some time to turn things around. And I think that's honestly the more kind of likely scenario and, and something that's played out in our history. It would be interesting to get a little bit of data to see how that bears out. But also the, some data that shows what's the maximum amount of money we've had to dip into the reserve in any one year. And between some, that's probably going to help us figure out, you know, I think your question is what roughly is the right amount? And maybe it's not 10%, maybe it's 11, maybe it's seven, but that, some of that kind of information might help suss that out a little bit. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I think some sensitivity analysis here would be useful for the board. I mean, I think the main message is very clear, like, all right, the president has some work to do to, to try to prepare us for the worst of times, which is what this large, that doesn't entirely outline. It could get a lot worse, I suppose. But what to do if all of this were to come true, how do we prepare for that? And that's the key message, and that's a really, that's a useful thing to do. It takes some time to work through that. But things could change also for the better, primarily if we could grow ourselves out of this to some extent, right? If we, if our enrollment rates increased significantly, as they have been over the last couple of years, that there's no reason to expect that to continue for another four years. But if they did beyond that, what did you say, the 2% or whatever a year, that would have a significant impact. So just to give us all some sense of what we're playing with, what if the state's budget is flat? What if it's a 2% increase or a 5% increase over the past biennium? What if enrollments are flat? What if we're 2%, 4%? So a little bit of sensitivity analysis so that, A, by the way, it might help us set what our enrollment targets for future years ought to be. How much do we expect to grow ourselves out of this? And how much do we have to cut out of this? Would be, I think, useful things to add to this analysis.
And if I can add two thoughts on that. One, the, when I've looked back at, you know, even pre-COVID years, the college has historically overspent yearly pretty, pretty significantly. And then come COVID, you know, all the federal stimulus money came in. And that's really where this ending fund balance started to come back to life. So that's my concern, is there's a pattern. So the pattern is established. That's all I'll say from a finance perspective. So that's what worries people like me. Because the worst thing I don't want to be in is a position where I have to come to the President Bulger and say, sorry, we have to cut 25 people next year because we really can't sustain it. That's the worst-case scenario. I've been in those. It's not comfortable. So that's always my worst case. I'm not saying we're there today. The, the other piece as far as tuition and there, there is, there's variables. Because, you know, the budget team, Jonathan, really does a great job. And there's a, he has a low, mid, high forecast, and they do, they do vary. All the indicators are showing we're, we're on this path. So we have a trajectory we need to really talk about. But something we've also discussed is the, is the, the enrollment growth being hard to sustain. So talking with the IR expert who's been at the college for years, she's quite concerned that, you know, you can't sustain this kind of type of enrollment growth. It's just, it just, you don't see that. And we do see our counterparts across the state. Some are, are down in enrollment, some are up, some are midstream, and some are leveling out. So it really is a gamut all over the place. So it's just concerning, given the current landscape and what tuition growth looks like, that we, we have to take a pause and really.
I wouldn't want you to do analysis that, that made the picture just seem rosy and, you know, that, that suggested we don't have to do anything, because clearly we do. But at the same time, it's useful to see that, to be reminded that there's some significant variables in there. And this is not entirely, this is not necessarily entirely about what do we need to cut. There's a growth, you know, trajectory as well. And just to underscore what you said, I'm 100% in favor of reserves. We have demonstrated to ourselves the necessity of them. But I think there's room to like discuss whether that, the proper amount is 10% or nine or whatever it might be.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So when we approved the budget last year, they've included a projected ending fund balance of 10 million for this year. Do we have a clear sense of, and now we're showing a, you know, a 7.8 million, so the $2.2 million difference. Do we have a clear sense of how our costs went up higher than expected? Or our revenue came in lower than expected that led us to that $2.2 million gap between our forecast and what we're seeing now?
When we built the, and I'll look at Jonathan if he wants to add some context. But when the, the '25 budget was built, it wasn't built with a 10% or a $10 million ending fund balance. It didn't have that built in.
Okay, I'll have to go back and look at last April's reports. But I, I, I seem to recall going back and looking at it already and seeing a 10% projected ending fund balance. Is that inaccurate?
I'll, I'll verify with Jonathan, and we'll get back to you for sure.
Yeah, getting a clear sense of, of how things changed and if we need better controls on how we're spending money? Or if it's that we're, our forecasts for our enrollment or some other funding was wrong? I'm still not clear on what changed between that date and this date. And if I'm inaccurate on my, what I'm remembering, please, please correct me. Let's see, are there any adjustments that can be made this year in the next, you know, for next term to try and adjust such that we might have a higher ending fund balance this year?
That's a, that's a strategy I'll discuss with President Bulger, and we can discuss that and get back to you. That's a, that's a strategy I'll discuss with President Bolger and we can discuss that and get back to you.
And I'm assuming that would be on the expenditure side with our revenues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I seem to recall hearing a number around legislative funding that was a little bit higher, around 6.9%. Can someone remind me where that came from? What would be the difference if we were to get that 6.9 instead of the 5.8? And basically any thoughts on how likely it is we'll get one versus the other?
We can, I can go back and look at that and get you information what the difference is between the 5.8 for and the 6.9%. I don't, I think at one point there was, they were looking at 8% and that at the time was 600,000 difference. But we can get you more specific numbers with your other information too.
Thank you. I see Austin and then it looks like President Bolger, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah. Do you see me?
Oh, I'm sorry Denise, you were hidden behind the, the.
Yeah, go, go, go ahead and choose Denise first.
Do you need to weigh in first or?
Yeah, I was just going to say that it may be worthwhile for us to bring a report back at the work session, the next work session, to answer some of these questions.
I have Denise and then Austin.
Thanks. Thank you. Sorry about that. Where do summer enrollments fall into? Do you blend them into spring or do you separate them out or what happens there?
We do, we do separate them out and we do have that included in there.
Included it where?
In the projections. And split. So Denise, let me just clarify, it's a split. Because you start with only a few weeks and then it rolls into the next year. So the revenue is actually split between the two years. We do a proration split, so it's not as much money as, as one would think.
Okay, well, I was just thinking it's good to see what those summer, when we're trying to also understand where growth possibilities might be, seeing what summer looks like can be helpful. But that's one thing. And can we go back to screen? I think it's page eight.
Working on it Denise.
Okay, no worries. And Austin, if you want to go ahead, well, or I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, totally, totally. Yeah, I'm actually really curious about the conversation about if we, if 10% is the right number and so forth. I think we can expand on that conversation, not necessarily tonight. But yeah, I do, I would like to expand on that conversation. I especially want to expand on that conversation when, if these certain laws and rules pass through this legislative session. Because we, I became informed of some interfund loan programs and potential opportunities there through my role with Oregon School Board Association. That might actually give us more financial tools and options that is much more effective than just having a 10% reserve and so forth. So as those laws go out of committee and, and rule changes go out of committee and so forth. And then different private equity fund programs look into these options of interfund loans between public entities and stuff. Yeah, there's, there's some potential opportunities there, I think, to have a further conversation of like whether or not a 10% reserve in our, in our fund essentially would be, yeah, essentially giving the board more options. So I, I'm open to that discussion. I really look forward to seeing what are some opportunities that happen at least in the coming year. So yeah.
So thank you for putting this page up. Speaking of options, that's sort of what my question is. I believe there was a question that said, that was asked whether or not the, this, the budget would be both tuition increases and FTE reduction? And I believe the answer was no either or. Did I understand that correctly?
You did. That is correct.
Okay, I, I know that we like to see, speaking, I think for a lot of us, like to see options. So I'm wondering what it would look like if it's some of each, not just an either or.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay. I mean, these numbers get, there's a big difference here, right? And between 2027 and 2028. And then of course, the sensitivity to tuition increases and how that, you know, affects enrollment, affects our students. As, you know, that's a big consideration as well. And obviously we have to have the workforce to, to meet the, the growth of the wonderful programs that we have. So anyway, I, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Sounds like we'll have some follow-up questions we'll get answered in the future and, and thank you so much.
Thanks Kara.
Chair, can I just take a second?
Yes, absolutely.
Kara, thank you. You know, I got on here in July and you had just like barely coming in, you know, too. And you had to figure everything out and there was a lot of stuff. And where you are right now, I mean, I just feel really like I'm getting the right information. And I just want to tell you what a great job you're doing and thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I really, we're not in the greatest position, but we, except we're in a great position having you lead us through this, you know, these, this, this stuff and help us get clear about what our responsibilities are. So thank you.
I'll take credit for that if you.
Going to move us into our final remaining items. So the next is the institutional campus climate projects update. President Bolger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, this is one of the reports that's part of my president's goals this year. And so this is one of the measures and it's an update by Shane Turner.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to come talk to you about this again. I'm waiting for my screen to come up. There it is. So tonight, being mindful of time, I'm going to talk to you about these four areas. We had some remaining projects held over from the 2023 survey. Remember we had campus climate work groups that recommended some projects. We can give you an update on that. Our departmental action plans that we talked about the last time we met. And then I'll, I'll touch on the president's goals and, and our plans to redo this survey. So first of all, here are the campus climate work group projects. There were nine of them that were approved by cabinet and you can see them all listed here. All of these are done. We have, we have completed each of these. I have, the, the last ones hanging out there were build an employee mentoring program. And I have the, the training for the first cohort of mentors that's going to happen this Friday. And then we also had the implementation of the management 360 degree evaluations. Completed the last cohort debrief with those folks last week. So really excited to have, have these completed and appreciate all the work that went into it in bringing these forward and, and bringing them to fruition.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, talking about the departmental action plans. This is, this is sort of the core of the Gallup model of change. And so the way that it works is each department debriefs their, their report, their individual departmental report with their team. And the team identifies what they want to work on, where we want to improve. And each department then creates an action plan that has smart objectives that they work through to, to bring to completion and hopefully increase those scores. So all employees have at least one departmental action plan in place and some have multiples because of the, the layering of, of organizations. So Jennifer Hayward has some in her area and some of Kara's work overlaps that. And so the employees might have multiple, multiple plans. Denise, I think the last time we met, you had asked about sort of what, what are the top areas? Or what things are departmental action plans most focusing on? There were three questions that were, were most frequently cited in the departmental action plans. Those were questions one, two, and four. Question one is about understanding what's expected of you. Question two is about having the resources you need to be able to do your job. And question four is about receiving recognition for a job well done. And so those were core to the, the action plans. But we had, we had a variety of the questions being tackled across, across the organization. Those were just the top ones. So it's a, it's a total quality improvement process. So once, once we check off the objective, we finished it, we, we go back and we create a new one. And so it's iterative and designed to continue total improvement. Other things that have been happening, Dr. Bolger mentioned the crucial conversations in psychological safety. Conversation that happened last week, we've, we've been increasing communication and listening sessions across campus. We hosted listening sessions downtown at the Mary Spildy Center, also on campus for employees who are concerned about changes at the federal level, just trying to improve that back and forth communication and understanding of our employees. We've also experienced improved labor management committee productivity. We're, we're finding that in that labor management group setting, we're getting more things done. We're talking, talking to each other more and working together positively. Didn't skip one. What I meant to mention in this slide is, is that these are core, these items that you see here are core to the president's objectives and goals that were set at the beginning of the year. So these are, are touching directly on the things that you said you wanted to see improved. So re-survey, that's, that's my last slide. And as soon as my computer moves to it, we had, we just had a kickoff meeting for this cycle on February 28th with the Gallup folks. We're planning to do the re-administration at the last two weeks of April. That's the same time window that we did last time and planning for reporting in June. We'll be asking all of the same questions with the addition of some questions that Vince Adams is, is working on for us and will be providing to us. So that will again play into the work that you're doing with, with Dr. Bolger on her goals. And looking forward to the survey, we're beginning to do messaging both to the managers and to campus to prime them that this is coming up and, and encourage their participation. And so I'm excited to see what the results show us. They're feeling very positive about the work we've done so far. And do you have any questions for me tonight?
I've got Denise first.
Thank you. I remember when this was first presented and you were really starting on all these projects. So to, to be here in March, beginning of March and the projects have all been addressed, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot. And so congratulations to the whole team effort on that. That really is. If I remember the presentation correctly, I think that what I, I, there were some really strong departments, really high ratings. And the model or an idea was to kind of use that as a potential mentoring type of model. Not to tell departments what to do, but to provide and say, you know, that these things seem to work and employees and the, you know, are very happy. Do I remember that correctly?
You do. Thanks. Thanks for remembering that. So we used that, that tidbit as, as a vehicle for some professional development that we did during fall in service. So we hosted a panel discussion with the supervisors who had departments where the scores were the highest. They had mean average scores of four or higher and hosted that panel discussion. Another thing that we, we've done is in some of the messaging to managers, one of the things that I, I discovered was that in addition to maybe focusing on questions one and two and four, I don't know if you remember from the report and I don't have it to be able to show it to you right now. But it's sort of organized in kind of a Maslow's hierarchy. So you have sort of these basic needs, like I know, I understand what's expected of me. I have the tools to do my job. And then as you get to the higher numbered questions, you're moving up sort of towards a more self-actualization kind of, of, of model. What I noticed among those high achieving departments is not only did they focus on sort of the core lower tier Maslow kinds of questions, they also hit some of those higher level questions as well. And so made a suggestion recently to have managers give that a try. So one of the, one of the questions is, my manager has, has talked to me in the last six months about my progress. That's one of the higher level questions. And so I threw out that suggestion like, hey, maybe this is a good, good one to try and a good time to try it because we're right before the survey window and see if that influences the scores. So yeah, we're trying to learn as much as we can from those higher scoring departments and, and scaffold that across the organization.
That's great. And I just have one, one more question. Can you flush out a little bit more about psychological safety? What, what exactly was going on there? I, I get the listening sessions and everything, but I, I need to, I'd like to know more about psychological safety.
So I, I invited trustee, a professor from Portland State University, who is a professor of industrial organizational psychology. So she does work, research with, with organizations and companies, other organizations on their climate, their workplace. And she does research on something called psychological safety. There's a scholar, her name is Amy Edmondson, who writes books and articles on psychological safety. And the, the underpinning of it is that it leads to greater productivity, greater belongingness in the, in the, in the organization. And so it's something that is trending a bit, but it's also something that our institution has been starting to embrace because the Y's statement, Y stands for welcoming, inclusive. Okay, we'll tell you that. It was the very first item on the, in the nine, in the nine projects is that the, the college really wanted a respectful community statement. And the, the college finished that respectful community statement last year, right before fall in service in September. And we rolled it out in, at the fall in service. And so it's a, we're, we'll get you a copy of it so you can see that. And the, the core of that statement is about being safe in the environment where you work. Being able to speak up, being able to be respectful when you air dissenting views and, and items like that.
Welcoming, inclusive, safe, and equitable.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So just, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this a little bit. So this psychological safety phrase has, is something that has, has been presented. And there's some reading and in-depth questioning and research going on about what this means as far as how it could apply to the campus community of LCC. Do I understand that right?
Yes, that's exactly right. And I invited a professor from Portland State University to come here and join us in a forum recently. It's about a week ago, two weeks ago or so. And the forum lasted about an hour. And we had about 60 individuals, 60 employees who were attending in hybrid fashion, within person and also by Zoom. It was a great discussion.
And that's kind of like step one to just know what it is and get the sense and terminology of it. And then it goes from there to something else?
It is actually connected to the survey that's going to be taking place. And so when you're fostering psychological safety, then you are also fostering the norms that you want to see that are represented in the campus climate survey. Thank you.
I have one question related to the, it was on slide four or five, the improved labor management committee. Can you just expand on that, like work that's done there and what you're seeing?
Yes, specifically, we've, we've done some work with our, our faculty labor partners. We expanded the membership in, in the, the committee and we've. We expanded the membership in the committee and we've. I don't know if it's just anecdotal, but it feels like a much more productive relationship in. The kinds of items that we're able to discuss, the kinds of solutions that we're able to reach in, in. Addressing things at a lower level so that they don't result in grievances. So. We have agreements where we bring in other resources if there's something we need to talk about. So for instance. We're talking about the student accommodation process and we brought in column to discuss that with, with the group and. Have I feel like come to some really positive resolutions on, on issues of mutual interest. So. It just feels like it's working better.
Okay, glad to hear that and look forward to continue. Focus and improvement in these spaces. I don't see any other questions or comments on this subject. So seeing none, we'll move on to our final discussion item before moving into our reports. So next is the Strategic Enrollment Management System Improvement Update. President Bulger, will you please introduce our speaker?
Yes, so we'll have Dr. Joyce come and give us an update on the, the system that's being improved.
Thank you. SGA President Gibson, President Bulger, Board of Education, glad to give you an update. If we can. Excuse me, I've had a little thing for like, I think, two months now. So anyway, I'm going to give an update here on. Improving the student experience here at Lane. We'll just move ahead to the next slide if we could. Okay, so in March of 2023, Dr. Bulger arranged from consultants from ACRAU to come out. ACRAU is the American Association. For Collegiate Registars and Admissions Officers. They visited LCC for two days and they provided a report with a number of recommendations. As a bit of a backstory, I also did consulting with ACRAU and went and visited community colleges in Wyoming, Michigan. Kentucky, Maryland, and so I've worked in this field for a while, and so that's one of my strengths. So I wanted to mention that. With these recommendations, myself, my team really looked at breaking down into three different areas. Those were improvement of recruitment application process, the student service experience and student communications. It's been two years since the visit and my team and myself have evaluated these recommendations. And prioritize those with what we felt were the greatest impact on students. We've successfully completed a number of goals and are actively working on others. As we move forward, I'm setting aside some ACRAU recommendations that I know are less critical. As we focus on new critical initiatives. I can confidently say that we've gone beyond some of these recommendations in some ways too, and made some significant improvements. Next slide, please. So in the three areas, this next one is improvement of recruitment and application process. In the report, the findings showed that there was an inordinate number of steps, as you probably recall. From application to enrollment, both in person and online. And in response, Student Affairs looked at all these different areas to make improvements. We did an audit of the application steps and reduced steps where possible. We evaluate recruitment communications for clearer language on the enrollment process. And then we utilize Targex, which is our front-end communication and application tool. To include automatic nudges, and that's through email, texts. And to highlight recruitment events such as Reg Fest and move students along in the process with what they needed to do next. We use the lens of ACRAU recommendations and the student experience. And we have a dedicated steering committee that works on these areas and is responsible for conducting a regular and comprehensive review. Of our application process. This is ongoing, things change. This committee examines a full student journey from the original request for information right through registration. And we look at eliminating efficiencies and streamlining and improving that student experience. And since the last ACRAU report, we've done a full audit of the application types and steps to complete. And the committee found some areas where steps could be streamlined and have removed or reduced barriers to improve efficiencies. We'll jump next slide if we can. Thanks. All right. In the ACRAU report, it became apparent that our student affairs departments were in need of more interdepartmental training to better support our students. As President Gibson mentioned earlier, and that's what we did is we've worked on increasing the knowledge base of employees. So. The areas that I work with in student affairs, areas like recruitment, admissions, financial aid, advising, records, enrollment services. And our new college achievement coaches are meeting together monthly and sharing information back and forth, changes. Letting each other know how we do what we're doing. And there's also cross-training going on, department updates, things like that. One of the, I mentioned it was actually timely with what Sophie mentioned earlier was co-op. I met with a co-op team last week. I felt I needed to know more about how they work, what they do. Really great meeting and I've invited them to speak to our team as well. So the more our, our staff can kind of be. Cross-trained on the front end, the better. They can help students and things like that won't happen hopefully as we do that. We've had. Career pathways and other areas come in and speak too, car for accommodations. I'll just mention as well, we started a new program by reallocating staff and current resources. And we've developed a program where we've trained college achievement coaches. We have seven of them and they're helping incoming students in a more comprehensive way. They've been trained in admissions, registration, financial aid, advising and other areas. And, and you kind of, you might want to ask, what does this mean for students? Basically, it means that they'll have a dedicated achievement coach when they get here and they'll be. Help them navigate all our services, all our processes. And it will improve their likelihood of persisting and reaching their certificate, their academic, their career goals. In a timely manner. And so this is a big improvement. It's very innovative and it's something we've not done here in this way before. Next slide, improvement of student communications. One of the things, I think the most important things here is we asked our students, we asked our students. How can we better communicate with you? We had focus group that was really well attended. We, we sat down with our students. We had some questions upfront. But the best thing about students is and qualitative kind of focus groups is they'll tell you what they want you to know. And, and so aside from our questions, we learned a lot from our students about how to better communicate with them. And sometimes we think we know better and then we don't, they know better. And so. Along with that, we've developed tips of the week. So these are. It's information on crucial student deadlines, success habits, academic and social resources. And we distribute it in a variety of different mediums and also we send out information in email and we send information on texts. Navigate 360, the enrollment nudge campaigns. We, we send out emails and texts to encourage students to. Who haven't registered for next term, and we also bring that to classroom. We ask our faculty as well to. To let students know if they haven't registered to do so and encourage them. And I think one of the biggest things that happened this year as well. I don't think it was presented on, but our colleagues in marketing communications. Developed that widget that's on our webpage, which allows our community. Who speak other languages, namely Spanish, Russian, Vietnamese and Ukrainian. To be able to read our website through that and, and that's a big improvement. It really opens access. So. I wanted to give that presentation in a bit of a timely way. So you have time for questions if you've got them. And I know we've got a lot of things going on tonight.
Thanks.
Good.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
We got a lot to do. We're always doing a lot and, and you know, the resources we've got, our people do a lot of great stuff. Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the board? I think Denise and then Steve.
Thank you so much. I mean, this is really great news, very innovative. I'm so excited to hear about how much input students have, the focus groups. The, the college achievement coach, what terrific ideas these are. And I'm wondering too, with the steering committee on, on the steps, because I know that was very challenging, 20 some odd. Steps to, to, to apply and everything like that. Were you able to test some. Things out with students to see how, how some of those changes are coming along?
Actually, I tested those steps out. This might be a little anecdotal Denise, but my own two daughters are now Lane students. And I went through the process with them. The, the, the actual in the report, it. It wasn't necessarily steps, but it was fields within the application. And we've worked to reduce some and we had to add a couple of others as well. We actually added one. Based upon input from Avery Alkaid, who asked for more information on our native students. So. We've, we've done a couple of tweaks, like to add a couple. We've also worked on taking some away that we, we were asking for information that wasn't necessarily that important to us. But we, I went through the process with my daughters and. One's also been attending OSU and one's been attending University of Portland and I asked them, was there much difference in the process? And they thought ours was similar, if a little easier because the universities ask for things we don't, we're open access. So. I would say we'll always have room to improve and we'll continue to do so, but we have reduced it. Yeah.
That's great.
I've got Steve and then Sophie.
Yeah, I have this vague memory and I could be wrong about the integration of new software to kind of support all of the. Improvements to the student experience. So, so is that correct? Is there new software that we are integrating in? Or taking advantage of to improve the experience?
We, the one we're primarily using is EAB Navigate, Education Advisory Board. Produce this software called Navigate. And what that does, it. If a student goes to advising, if a student goes to financial aid, if a student. Goes to tutoring, all those different areas, ideally staff should be putting information in about the student to say, oh, they attended here. They, they, they came for tutoring services, they came to financial aid, we helped them. So. When an advisor meets with a student, they'll know that they're working with that department or not. So that's one of the things we're doing. And it does a lot more than that. We're able to track student engagement. Are they in clubs like that? As long as we're recording that information. So. That, that is doing that, but we're also looking at working with Brent and IT. We've had some changes and we're looking at. Single sign-on for the students as well, and that's still ongoing, that project where they're not going through different sign-ons for multiple different areas.
Okay, so it's just a follow-up then, so it was the EAB thing that I was thinking about. I couldn't remember its name. And I remember a description about it, you know, some time ago and talking about basically it's team, it allows for basically a team approach to focus on. And I, you know, flag students who are, you know, who are having problems, trying to catch them early, that kind of thing. And I, my guess is it also. Basically requires faculty, staff, et cetera, to, you know, opt in essentially in terms of participating and making that extra.
Department is, we try and encourage them to, but we're, we, we keep increasing every year. And, and I will say it's also really helpful as a tool. For us as well to be able to, like Kathy and IR, and I don't think Keith, is Keith here? We've gotten you director in IR, which is fantastic. Shelley's going to mention that later. Did I just scoop you? Anyway, so we're able to collect data and look at trends and also see how our students are doing and be able to look at. With our college achievement coaches, we're going to work on focusing on students who seem to be struggling or not engaging and those kind of things. So we're using it for that.
The final thing I'll say is, is this something I'm interested in. It seems to me to have a lot of potential power. I can also see, you know, pitfalls because once again, you. Have to have a lot of folks agree to, you know, take advantage to, to, to work on it, to input information, to use the system. And so there's a transition time and I get all of that. I think also though, right, we were persuaded to make an investment, we, the board were persuaded to make an investment to do all of that. And so I think essentially on behalf of the board, there's, we should get some kind of update that's on some kind of frequency. You know, I'll leave it to you to figure out what are the metrics that are appropriate for us to hear about, but basically getting at the uptake, how do we know? What percent of our, you know, of our faculty and our staff are inputting data is potentially a metric? How many students is that system tracking? Ultimately, it's for you to decide what data. To share with us to give us some sense of the value of that investment.
Thank you for that. We'll, we'll do that.
Sophie.
So you've kind of mentioned that you're, that the college is trying to take away barriers for students to. Not only apply, but get cleared to register for classes. And I've noticed a trend of students just coming in kind of not knowing what to do and they aren't very oriented. At the college and don't know their next steps. So. It seems like the college achievement coaches are going to kind of put an end to that hopefully, but. Can you tell me your thoughts about like the actual orientation for students? I don't think LCC has done that in quite a while.
We, we do have an online orientation that students can use. It's probably ready to be reviewed again. It's, it, it's comprehensive. It was implemented just when I got here. I would say that it's a little, there's too much in it, actually. And so orientations have been. Reevaluated across colleges now and what we're finding is if you do a full orientation for students. They retain about 10% of the information. So what we're doing is. Small upfront for the college achievement coaches, they're going to do intakes where they meet with a group of students and do an intake appointment and tell them like the most important things they need to know right away. And then what we're going to do then is deliver information in a timely manner when it's needed. Say for instance, about two weeks into the term. Here's tutoring. You might not have thought you needed it a couple of weeks ago, but you might need it now. And to get them early before midterms before that. So we're, we're trying to. Do that to parcel out the information when they're likely to need it. And we were already sending tips of the week out to do that right now. You might see them.
Cool. Just a follow-up on that though, maybe there could be some, you know, better letting students know. That orientation is a thing because I've asked two of my classes, which is about 40 students and not one of them knew that there was an orientation they could have attended.
And, and that's the recent. I think too. Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow as well.
I've got Austin.
Yes, Austin.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
What was that?
Hear you. We can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay, perfect. Oh yeah, well, there's probably even some opportunities even to work alongside with student government in collaboration with them, you know, because obviously student government, you. Hold a lot of different events. There might be an opportunity to table some of those coaches there to be there to answer questions, get basic just guidance and stuff like that. So there's some potential opportunity, I think, for some collaboration alongside student events and so forth. And yeah, we'll have to see if those conversations can happen in the near future or in preparation for next year potentially. So. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I just see there's opportunities to collaborate. Great job with putting this together and the report. It's really great to hear multiple areas and opportunities to connect and to interconnect resources to students. And. The other thing I kind of want to kind of get a, a better idea of, because this has come up in conversation multiple times since I've been up here in Salem is. The Benefits Navigator. Where is the transition? So. We are talking to a student, we're reaching out to a student, we're doing outreach to a student. And when does a handoff to a benefits navigator happen in this process?
The Benefits Navigator is located in a different area from mine. It's actually in building four and Career Pathways in that area. And so. In, in Career Pathways. The, the, the students coming in go through an intake process. So during the intake process, they, they. Evaluate the student needs and whether they get assigned the benefit navigator at that point early on. Our team now in building one and building 19, one of our new college achievement coaches worked in Career Pathways and CARE and is very.
worked in Career Pathways and CARE and is very knowledgeable about that area and has also trained our college achievement coaches to be more knowledgeable to, to help referrals.
Understood, understood. So, and so you have those interactions, but it's for like situations where we might be seeing a student, like they decrease attendance. We reach out to them, it's because they have housing insecurity. What happens, is that, does that in itself trigger a referral to the benefits navigator?
Yes, that, what we're doing now, so we, we, our college achievement coaches, the, they start in the first cohort on March the 31st, and that's one of the things we're also working on. We've developed a set of metrics to, to track our students, to see whether they're using resources, how are they doing academically, if they're reporting houselessness, things like that. So this is going to be a much more, I would say, the word intrusive isn't a good one, but a much more kind of high-touch model. So we'll know more about our students too, but also using that technology through Navigate to track them. So it's a mix of high-touch and a good use of technology.
Understood, great, thank you so much. I really appreciate you describing those dynamics.
All right, thank you.
You mentioned that previously there was like 41 steps to apply or fields to fill out. Do we have a new number for where we're at?
No, but I can get that for.
That'd be lovely, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, not seeing any more questions or comments, let's move on to our committee reports.
Thank you.
Yes, and so I'll introduce Dr. Tinkham first and then followed by, by Shane Turner and then followed by Dr. Joyce.
Good evening, President Bulger, President Gibson, Chairman Holland and board members. I will keep my comments brief today and in light of the hour, and I know that you still have work to do. I'm absolutely delighted to report that today we hosted Becky Chambers, the author of the Psalm of the Wild Built, Using Lane Forward Funds. We were able to reinvent the Common Read Program. This is a pilot year for the program. I was able to attend part of the event today. And Becky Chambers discussed really the importance of storytelling and its power within our culture. And then of course I had to go to another meeting, but it seemed like it was very well attended and it was just lovely to see us engaging in these sorts of activities and building our community. And it's, so it came to fruition today. So yeah, thank you for, for your support with that. I also wanted to bring to your attention something that Academic Affairs has been working very hard on, also with, in conjunction with Student Affairs, under the, the leadership of President Bulger, and that's to bring more of a, a work-based experiential learning component to the work that we're doing. And on page five of my report, I've highlighted the work of Tammy Hill. She's the project coordinator, lead in workforce development. And part of this initiative, we're trying to better bridge our employers with our students and our faculty and our staff, because the things that we hear from our employers are they can't find individuals with the skill sets that they're looking for. And they communicate to us a willingness to help with that. And we also know that people are leaving our communities because they can't find work. So we have implemented a software called Handshake. It's essentially LinkedIn for students. And we, the college through Tammy Hill's work has registered over 700 local employers. So that means jobs for our students, that means work experience, that means co-ops and internships. And that means that we'll be able to better connect with our employers. So in Academic Affairs, we are being responsive both to our work-based learning imperative and then also, you know, our humanities, we, we do it all here in Academic Affairs. And if you read the report, you'll see there's lots of work going on. And in the interest of time, I won't be able to talk about all of it. But if you have a question, I'm more than happy to address it.
Well done.
Good evening, again. As you heard in my previous report, much of what I would cover in, in this one was covered in the campus climate update. I do want to just put in a touch point on the Lane Forward Fund. Shelley mentioned funding the Common Read. We received 16 applications for Lane Forward Funds this year. Those went through a committee and were forwarded to Cabinet for final decision-making. We received those, or went through those last week at Cabinet and expect to make announcements on awardees over the next couple of weeks. So more news to come, but we're at an exciting point in that process.
Nice.
Sure.
Does handshake include like work, study, learn and earn and internal jobs on the campus?
You know, I don't.
Yes, it will include.
It will.
It will.
It will. I don't believe it does now, but that is the plan.
Cool.
The idea is that it will be all encompassing for everything.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right, I think I'm up. All right, I, I trust that you've read the student affairs report and our docs. I wanted to just point out a couple of things and then add one thing. Our student life and leadership department took nine students to the PSU Proud Conference, an event that was sponsored by SGA and, and, and the Council of Clubs. And these students were among the few who represented their institutions at the conference, making their participation especially significant. And I want to point out, our student activity fee committee has put in so many hours. They have done so much work in these last months, talking with all of the funded groups on campus. And they've done it in a way that hasn't been done in several years since pre-COVID. And they've really taken it, taken it very seriously. And, and they, they've done like 20 hours each to the work on this. And it, it's been a learning, uh, opportunity for them. But they've also really done so much. It's, it's, it's been impressive and you'll see those recommendations brought up, I think in April at the board meeting. Last thing I wanted to mention, and, and this is again, student life and leadership and student affairs in general, you know, I think everyone's being affected to some extent by the federal government changes, the executive orders, the dear colleague letter. Our students certainly, our students have been through COVID. And now the students are worried about safety, psychological safety. And so what we did is we put on four different listening sessions in our downtown campus, the Long House, multicultural center, and I'm not sure where the other one was. But we had public safety, we had communications, student life, academic affairs, and mental health and other groups there. And we, 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 we just talked to our students and, and, you know, and they were voicing their concerns and we're offering safety, support and reassurance where as things change, we need to change too. And we need to be there for our students and, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Austin.
Yeah, um, yeah, no, I definitely understand where the students are coming from with the concerns and everything like that. And the perspective that I have in working with all 17 community colleges, working with OPC, which is the Oregon Presidents Council, there are some incredible people who do good work. And all of them want our students to be safe, protected and know that they belong here. So if there's anything I could communicate to any student, if they listen, if they are here, is that there's some incredible people doing incredible work to make sure that you are protected and that you're safe and that you belong here. Regarding the student fee committee, we obviously heard some concerns during public comment about reduction in their funds. And I'm sure we'll obviously get more information in a future meeting because we approved those student activity fee funds. Can you give us a little more insight on that with the neurodivergent student union?
I, I know the recommendations, I would rather maybe have a conversation with Dr. Bulger and then maybe bring now a future meeting if that's all right, rather than piece out different ones here and there, if that's okay.
No, no, totally understandable, yeah. I just wanted to see if there was anything that we should know ahead of time, so, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's, let's move to board member questions and comments. Austin.
I think you'll see a poster for the powwow that's happening on April 5th. We've been holding powwows since 1970. I actually didn't know this about our history as an institution. It's one of the largest powwows in the Northwest. And I just want to encourage my fellow board members to attend that. It gives a great cultural perspective of the indigenous people of the, of this land and the surrounding areas. And it's a beautiful event, I've taken my parents there and it's, was a really special circumstance and situation to, to attend the powwow. So in regards to some of the things that also attached is the OCCA report. Obviously we're up here in Salem, we're going to be doing a lot of good work in regards to less, I love saying advocacy and lobbying. And additionally, I wanted to kind of discuss, talk about a few points, and I've made these points before in the past. One being the testing center, I think it's an invaluable resource, particularly as we are assessing and understanding AI's impact on education. Having a proctored testing situation could be really beneficial for not only your students' education and our faculty's educational plans and so forth. Additionally, I, I do, I do want to know more about the neurodivergent students. I, I really admit as an individual, I still need to learn more about neurodivergent barriers and especially around educational institutions. So that's something that I would love to learn more about and I would love to, I mean, have conversations who are experts in this subject matter to kind of help me gain more knowledge in regards to this. We also heard things about land back statements. I've spoken to the NASA students directly and had a great opportunity to have a conversation with them about land back statements and why they are important, especially around respecting tribal sovereignty and nationhood. And I think we should have an expanded conversation about land back statements. I know the diversity council came up with a land back statement. And maybe there's an opportunity to work with NASA students to create similar terminology that was used by the diversity council's land back statement. So I think there's a broader conversation. I know we've talked about our land acknowledgement as a past discussion item before in the past. And maybe we can expand on this towards land back statements. Again, potential discussion points and something that I'm interested in as a board to see if we can have further conversation and exploration around this topic. That's all I have for today. I hope that you, as many of you can attend, going up to Salem tomorrow to help with our lobbying efforts with OCCA. And I look forward to working with all you. Thank you.
Just one moment, Kevin. I know President Bulger, I know you've been doing a lot of work to reach out to Native Americans perspectives in our community. Would you like to speak to that now or speak to that in one of our next board meetings?
Well, we're not ready to do that this evening and certainly the lateness of the hour is a consideration. But yes, this work is going on and I certainly will bring something back at the, at the, the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Kevin, yours next.
Thank you, I have two quick items. The Association of Community College Trustees, the ACCT, has an awards process every year. And I would like the chair to consider how we might proceed with nominating some folks for these national awards. The categories include trustee leadership, equity, chief executive officer, faculty member and professional board staff member. And I can think of, you know, two category, three categories right away where, you know, we have some pretty good folks and we might want to move forward with the nominations, which are due by June 23rd. So we have a little time.
That sounds like a great idea and look forward to working with you on that.
So that, that's the first one. And then the second one, Jennifer Hayward, but I'll, I'll go through you, president. I seem to remember back maybe, I don't know, three, four months ago, there was a discussion about, and I'm probably going to get this wrong, but it was, it was either the electrical distribution building or maybe it was the boiler building. Anyway, there were some concerns about the integrity and the life of that particular facility. Sometime I would be interested in a follow-up, a conversation about, you know, has, has, has the perspective changed? Are we looking at a catastrophic failure? So just an update.
Jennifer Hayward wears it well, doesn't she? Yes, no, we'll bring, we'll bring that back. Thank you for that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, so two final items as we close out. I had submitted a work session poll. If you go to the board member questions and comments, it's in the body of the text there. So just expect to get an email from Celia asking to see if you are supportive of having that as a work session poll topic. And then the last item is around board meeting dates. As some of you are aware, I also serve on the City of Eugene Budget Committee. And the schedule for that has come out and they are the same time and dates as our board meetings. So I will be sending out a survey asking if it is possible to potentially shift two of our budget committee meeting nights to the night before, the night after. So just expect that survey. And obviously if that's not possible, I will figure it out, how to deal with it. But if it is possible to shift the two budget committee meetings that month, a single night forward or back, I would very much appreciate it to be able to fulfill my role. So please look for that survey. And with that, our meeting is adjourned, let's come back.